Thirty, I'm gonna call this city session to be consulted to order on September ninth, two twenty-five. Uh, we got four items on the agenda tonight. Uh, first up, we got two items with, uh, South Suburban Parks and Rec, uh, looking at Jackass Hill Park Site Plan and Hudson Gardens Vision Plan. And then we have an update from the Communications Department, and discussion on long-term capital financing. So, I'll turn over to the City Managers to introduce the South Suburban topics.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council members. Um, first item tonight is, uh, Jackass Hill Park. I think we're all, we're all familiar, the city's been working hard with, with South Suburban and with, uh, or, or, excuse me, Arapaho County, and with the neighbors in the vicinity of the park to, um, make this something that really meets a lot of the interests that we've, we've heard over the course of this project. So, I'm gonna turn over briefly to Deputy City Manager Mike Gent, who can also recap a little more of how we got to this night from where we were several months ago. And then I know our guest from South Suburban, I know Melissa will be able to speak to more of the, the project itself and what we think it's gonna look like at this point.
Excellent. So, first of all, introduce our guest. So, we have Melissa Reese Thacker, who's the Director of Planning. I guess technically the interim director, but I like celebrating the director, so I'll just say Director of Planning. And then Nicole Stellic, who's the Director of Recreation for South Suburban Parks Recreation. She's, Nicole's here mostly for the second item they're gonna talk about tonight.
Just a pretty face on the first one.
(laughing) Um, so, uh, I don't want to steal any thunder from Melissa's, uh, presentation, um, but I will say that, uh, really a big thanks to all those people who've been engaged in this project for, for many years on, on what's gonna come with this, you know, currently undeveloped open space to make it, uh, uh, more accessible, to, to make it a better neighbor for the neighbors, but also to preserve that, that natural feel. Um, the neighbors have, have been engaged at a high level throughout the process, including in the, the last few months, to help us get to this revised, um, site plan. Um, Arapaho County has been really flexible and supportive of us as we've, as we've, uh, uh, been awarded a grant to help partner with City of Littleton and South Suburban Parks to help this dream come to fruition. And, uh, and we have an opportunity to go back to them with this revised plan after our council. And then tomorrow night, the, the, it's tomorrow day, whatever you guys meet, the, the Board for South Suburban has a chance to review it as well. Um, so, big thank you to the, to the neighbors of Jackass Hill and those who've been engaged at citizen level. Big thanks to this council for being, um, flexible and adaptable as we've kind of, you know, evolved through this process. And then, and really can't say enough about our partners at South Suburban, who have led, um, this project and really worked with us as, as we've gone through these evolutions. So with that, I'll turn over to Melissa Reese Thacker.
Logan, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Thanks for having us to talk about a couple of, um, ongoing projects here at, at South Suburban. Um, I know that you are all familiar with Jackass Hill from previous presentations, Jackass Hill Park. So I'll just kinda jump into it. I wanted to give you a short background in history, just as a refresher. So, Jackass Hill Park is a seventeen-acre undeveloped park established in nineteen ninety-four. Um, it is made up of two parcels, with the, um, south parcel being owned by the City of Littleton and acquired from the Sunset subdivision developers' land dedication requirements. And the seven-acre north parcel is owned by the South Suburban and was purchased through an agreement between a citizen-led group and the developer, resulting in the reduction of twelve homes in the subdivision. In nineteen ninety-four, uh, when the park was established, um, there were no funds available for development. It was determined at that time that the use, it was stated that at that time the use would be determined through a public input process. And there was a vast disagreement between citizens on what the park should be, whether it should be active, passing, or a combination of both. And interestingly enough, I pulled an article from March seventeenth, nineteen ninety-four, from the Littleton Independent. And, um, just because it's very small to read, it popped a few of the, the quotes up larger on the right screen, with our executive director at the time, Dave Lorenz, um, saying that South Suburban, I do not see us having any money to develop it for a long time. And that's how we've gone from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and five without development. Um, but interesting enough, um, just a quote from here, if you don't mind me reading, that during the planning process, several public hearings and neighborhood meetings will be held before the board approves a plan, Lorenz said. We are going in with a clean slate, Lorenz said. We don't know what the site will be. Residents of the surrounding communities of Golden West Park and Shadycroft, who've worked together to create the park, do not all agree on how it should be developed. One of the residents, Mueller, said he would like to see ballfields for children in the area, but Racine said she wants the area preserved as a natural open space park. The groups have unofficially agreed on a compromise of two ballfields, Racine said. If there's talk of any more than that during the planning process, that being ballfields, you're going to have vocal outcry, like during the Jackass Hill process with the city. Racine, Racine said it's a volatile subject. So, that had to do with the development of subdivision. I would say, uh, what are we, thirty-one years later, we're in a very similar situation. So, just thought it was interesting to share with you. Um, in twenty twenty-one, South Suburban initiated the public input process based on neighborhoods, neighbors' concerns with undesirable activities occurring in the park. And we had several past meetings and actions, and they're all outlined here. Won't read them to each of you, but I'm gonna hit on a couple of the important ones later on in the process. But following several public input meetings, comment periods, um, the City Council endorsed the Jackass Hill Site Plan on March twenty-first of two thousand and three. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand and three, the South Suburban Board of Directors approved the Jackass Hill Site Plan. Um, we held a public comment period in October of twenty-four for, um, design development drawings. We submitted the first round of drawings to Littleton's Community Development Department for approvals. And we applied, um, the city applied with South Suburban's support for an Arapaho County Open Spaces Grant in April of twenty twenty-five. And in doing so, um, citizens reached out again with concerns about the site plan. And that's how we somewhat have, um, arrived at what we're presenting today. But just as a refresher, the existing approved final site plan, um, for Jackass Hill Park is shown here on the screen. It includes development on both the north and the south parcels with looped trails, um, on the north end being a proposed north seating area with shade structures. Um, again, the looped trails, stairways down to Sunset Drive, crossing of Sunset Drive, stairways up the other plateau on the south parcel, a looped trail system there with additional neighborhood connections, um, a proposed vista terrace to look out over, um, the mountain range that is pushed back from the edge of where it is today, um, a nature playground and nature discovery trail. Um, based on some of the concerns from the neighbors, South Suburban, the city, and Littleton, um, proposed a revised, a proposed a plan amendment. And it's intended to preserve the key elements of the twenty twenty-three site plan while addressing concerns from adjacent neighbors. And specifically, some of those concerns were the extent of concrete cur surfaces, um, limiting future, the development of new future, um, social trails, the restoration of the native vegetation in the park, the height of vegetation and the placement of vegetation to preserve views, and the new park activities. And specifically, the nature playground, discovery paths or discovery trails, the north overlook area, and the proposed parking spaces on Sunset Drive. So, the plan adjustments that, um, were proposed and we're discussing is a reduction in the concrete paths and converting most of those paths to soft surface or crusher finds. Um, maintaining an accessible route to the overlook, the Vista Terrace, from the accessible parking spot on Dry Creek Court. Um, limited use of concrete, and the concrete use is limited to steep slopes, stairs, and accessible routes. Um, we're proposing to remove several of the existing social trails and restore the native vegetation. We've adjusted the placement of new shrubs and removed new trees to protect those views. And we removed the new activities, and again, those activities are those listed in blue on the left side of the screen. So, based on that information, this is the proposed preliminary, it is the preliminary site plan first amendment. And much like when you approve subdivisions or the city as a whole approves subdivisions, we're having to amend something. So this is an amended site, it's a first amendment to this site plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-three. So, um, this plan starting on the north end, it includes a looped trail, all being in crusher finds with connection to the neighborhood to the north. Um, a stairway that has been moved further to the east where the, uh, slope is less steep, but we still have a crossing of Sunset Drive. There are no proposed striped parking spaces on Sunset. Sunset is, um, open to public parking. There's no, there are no park, there are no signs that prohibit parking on the street, but we're not designating parking spaces.
Can you just describe the distinction between having marked parking versus no marked parking? Cars are parked there regardless?
Yeah, um, it's a little bit hard to see, I admit. I don't think the pointer works if I remember right, it won't. So if you look at Sunset, it's really hard to conceive.
I can see them there.
Just this little bump out. So we were proposing to do a bump out for a protected crossing of the road and then actually striping parking spaces for parallel parking on Sunset Drive.
Right, but the concern was the striping of parking. I'm just having a hard time understanding, there's cars parked there.
Yes, and cars can continue to park there, but instead of designating it and making, bringing attention to the parking, it's available, but we're not making improvements to designated as parking.
And no bump out anymore for a protected crossing?
Does it look more commercial if it's painted like on Main Street than if it's not? It, it, in a, um, so a more suburban area, it's just, you know, there's no striping or anything?
I, I just don't understand that, but I mean, there's cars parked there. I don't understand what an issue with having stripes versus no stripes.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it looks more commercial, like a more formal park that you've got striping.
Like off Littleton Boulevard?
No, like downtown where you're.
I mean, cars are.
I'm saying residential, people ask for residential designated parking so that they have some clarity in how to actually access and use the park, just like they would in any other residential neighborhood.
Honestly, those are decisions to be made by Littleton and specifically the Public Works Department, not necessarily South Suburban. So that's why we proposed just removing them from the plan. And, um, if there's a desire within the city to do something else, that could be a potential. Sunset is a low-traffic roadway, just serving that neighborhood. And that's also, um, the reason why we were comfortable with removing the bump outs for that crossing.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask for the bump outs. I mean, striping for parking, it's, if there's cars parked there, there's cars parked here. I mean, it's not a natural state to have cars parked on asphalt. But the safety aspect of if we have a trail that crosses a street, what's the rationale for making it less safe without a?
It can, it has to do with the volume of the traffic on Sunset Drive. And then, um, working towards the comments received from the adjacent neighbors asking for specific changes.
And more than changes, they want to preserve existing conditions. So they, as much as possible, they want things to stay similar to what they experience today.
But we don't have a trail crossing there right now, do we?
There is, um, there's no.
No official trail.
There's no official trail. So we have these socials trails coming down and they do cross. There's a place where you obviously cross from one side of Sunset to the other using those social trails. Yes.
I'm just thinking from a safety aspect, if we're having an official trail. I mean, right now, people are just running through grass, kind of, I don't wanna say, not trespassing, but there's no trail. They're not walking, they can walk wherever they want. Here, we're kind of guiding people across, okay? I would think I would prefer having some sort of safety feature at the crosswalk there.
And again, once you hit the public right of way, that really becomes, those, that's out of South Suburban's purview. It's fully within the cities. So if you would, what I'm saying is, if that is a desire of the city, there's, and it, there's other routes in which to accomplish it than to show it on this site plan.
Sounds good.
That, that was more so my point than like, eh, we don't.
Can, can I ask a really stupid question?
Robert, you don't have to preface it.
Everyone already knows, everyone already knows, so don't, don't. How, how are you, how, what, why do we think the social trails are gonna go away?
That's a good question.
So, you know.
Look, she said it was good.
It wasn't.
They said, don't preface it.
So right now, when you, you, you wanna go to watch the sunset?
No, I, I understand right now, but, but like, what about this design is gonna reduce the s- social trails? Other than kind of, that, that's my question. Thank you.
So, looking at the patterns, and I, I apologize, I don't have them in this presentation, but if you were to look in an aerial photo of Jackass Hill Park, there is very distinct routes that people want to take. And there's distinct places people want to go.
Right.
Because we haven't provided them with a designated route, there's multiple fingers.
Uh-huh.
If we identify the patterns of where people want to go and we provide them with a walking surface, whether that be a soft surface trail or a concrete trail, and it's generally in line with where they want to go anyway, people tend to follow a designated path.
Are we, are we, I mean, are, do you believe in that we are, these trails that you're putting in, that we are, that you're proposing to put in, will replicate the tri- the social trails? Or, um, or that some of the social trails will be built or returned as people try to essentially take a shortcut to the, um, to the places where they wanna go?
Yeah. So, um, we have a, we're recommending a, a revision to this plan, and that will come up in a future slide.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, and generally, uh, we'd like to get through this round of public comments and understand. Um, we may be looking at the direct path that some of these trails go, but that would occur between what you see now in preliminary plan and a proposed final site plan first amendment.
Okay, great, thank you.
There also will be re-vegetation as part of the project. They'll make the current social trails less inviting. So we'll create a more inviting, you know, preferred trail, and we'll re-vegetate the areas that we wanna discourage people from walking along.
Great, thank you. Keep coming, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, we weren't actually done. I apologize for that. Um, on the south parcel, um, the looped trail system that's been introduced does generally fall, follow the northeast, sorry, northwest-southeast connection from the neighborhood to the crossing of Prince Street. Um, the access from the crossing of Prince Street to the Vista Overlook meanders a little bit more than it does now. We are looking, do we straighten it up? I, I, it may not be the exact path that it follows today, something in between. Um, we are proposing the Vista Terrace remains with no true changes. We've added some additional vegetation. That Vista Terrace is set back thirty feet from where, um, the precipice is now. If you walk out, you can walk right up to that edge. By pulling that terrace back, putting a boulder edge at the edge of the plaza, creating this vegetative swell beyond that plaza seating area towards the homes, we're really, um, creating a disconnect that just, it's less inviting for folks to try to go over the boulders and into the vegetation and down that hillside. Will it prevent that off from? No, that, that's, if people really want to do something, they will do it. But we're providing with a more inviting space that people will want to be in versus climbing through shrubs and additionally ground. And we have removed from this plan the nature playground and the, um, discovery trails. Um, we've created a better connection between the accessible parking space on Dry Creek Court and, um, the Vista Terrace and the crossing on Prince Street. And that area is proposed to be in concrete specifically as an accessible route. And we will work with the city to designate a parking spot on Dry Creek Court as accessible parking. Um, beyond that, for the most part, again, concrete has been limited to stairways, steep slopes, and accessible paths. Um, trying to think if there's anything I missed in here, and I apologize for feeling a little bit off. And we have moved the trail a little bit further away from the Carson Foundation. This, again, this is a foundation for the existing, uh, the existing foundation for the Carson Home. The Carson Home was moved from this site to South Flat Park and is now the Carson Nature Center. And we're proposing interpretive signage for the foundation, explaining why it's there and what is the significance, along with, um, interpretive signage at the Vista Overlook, talking about the mountain range and what you can see from that, um, viewpoint. This plan was, um, put out for public comment, and we received fifty-two public comments between August twentieth and September third. Overall, what we heard was support for the reduced concrete paths, support for preservation of the natural character, and appreciation from residents that, um, these items were taken into consideration. Some comments that we heard, that we are evaluating, is one limiting fencing, especially near the sledding hill. So we have a significant amount of fencing around the edge of the park to prevent people from going up those slopes, creating erosions through new social paths. And, um, we'll demonstrate where that area is in an upcoming slide. Extending the looped trail in the north so that we're, um, going, where the, the pathway will take you out to the overlook area. And then we added a note, we're adding a note to the plan. We've always intended for this vegetated swell at, at the Vista Terrace. It's just not specifically called out on the site plan, so we've added that note. Um, mixed opinions that we've received from the neighbors. Um, we've received support for the removal of the nature play and the nature exploration path because, um, some building makes and maintains a more natural feel of the park. And we received several requests to reinstate the nature play area due to lack of nearby playgrounds. Additional comments that we received were both ways, should there be more parking? Are we providing enough parking or, or we're good without the parking? So again, it's mixed. Um, there's been more comment, there's been additional comments about safety and maintenance access. Can we get our maintenance vehicles in there to maintain those trails? And can we get our patrols, whether it be the park rangers or the, the PD, can they get into the park to do their, to do the things that they need to do to maintain safety? Um, trail alignment, are the trail alignment direct enough? Um, something that we just discussed. Additional comments about, um, some people appreciate the interpretive signage, some say it's not necessary. Um, we still remain to get comments about keeping the park completely undeveloped. Um, and then, uh, but there's some comments about what is appropriate stair material? Is concretely appropriate stair material? But basically, what we found out of these broad range of comments is support for a naturalistic design with debate over balancing open space preservation versus community amenities. Again, that open space preservation is more of a mindset of the community because it's been that way for so long. But if you go back through the, um, documents for the dedication of the park, whether it's through the City Council's approval of the subdivision or other things, the intention's always been that whatever this park will become in the future will be determined through the public outreach process, and that's what we've completed. Um, so again, those proposed revisions, we are looking at on the north side. And they're called out in red, and since we've already gone through the plan and the next two slides are a little bit easier to see. This is just the north half of the park. So we're proposing an additional loop. We still want that direct connection from the stairway to the neighborhood because looking again at those aerial photos, that is where people want to go. But people also wanna get out and look at that, the edge. Um, so we'll be adjusting the trails with, um, based on comments that we receive from, um, council and from the Board of Directors, if this is an agreeable type change, if this is recommended. Um, staff is suggesting that we realign these trails. And then there's comments about sledding that occurs on, um, the cul-de-sac here. And staff as a whole has mixed feelings about that because sledding that occurs on natural grasses, native grasses, the snow has to be probably six inches thick to do it at a minimum, and then it becomes a muddy slope if, if it's not, and it, that wears down the grasses. But based on community input, this is already occurring. So we could remove the fence, we could leave it in place, we could not install it to begin with, and if it becomes an issue, install it at a later date. Um, I think that's just a comment that we're working through on a maintenance standpoint. And I'll, but we're, we're okay today with recommending, um, you know, we're okay with not installing it at first and, and, um, just kind of observing the situation to determine if it's needed at a later time. And then on the south side, we're not proposing any major changes. There will be some minor adjustments once we get to the final site plan. Uh, but we are adding the note to the, um, the Vista Terrace that the, it, we intend to put this well, we've always intended, it's just adding the note to make it clear that that is what's being proposed. Um, so our tentative next steps is to discuss and review this plan with you tonight. Tomorrow night, during the South Suburban Board of Directors Study Session, we'll share any comments that you provide and the comments provided from the public. Based on that discussion with, um, the South, from South Suburban Board of Directors will prepare and present, um, the proposed final site plan first amendment to the South Suburban Board of Directors during a future business meeting. And following an opportunity for public comment, ask the board, request the board to approve the plan. Once that step is complete, and again, these steps are one after another, so if something, early on doesn't happen, we can't continue down the line. Based on that, we would approach Arapaho County Open Spaces. Uh, the city was already awarded a grant for this project, an amount of six hundred thousand dollars towards development. We would ask the county to, um, well, we would propose a grant notification and ask for the county's approval. With that, we would revise construction and drawings and submit to the City of Littleton for approval. And that's the process. And that's the process that we do through the community development draw, um, department and with the um, development review engineers additionally. If all goes along, we would put the project out to bid and construction would be potentially planned from spring to summer of twenty-six.
So this process through the county, will it go back before the advisory board? So will you let us know when that meeting is, please?
Yes. Yes. It does not go back before the board of county commissioners.
But it goes back before the advisory board.
Is this ninety percent drawings in or is this what percent?
So we were at ninety percent drawings and now we're taking a step back. And um, there's considerable costs, about fifty thousand dollars to revise that set of construction drawings to better um, align with what's being proposed today. And um, that is going to take a certain amount of time, at least through the end of the year, maybe into the uh, January, February. To get everything revised, submitted to the city and ready for approval, for approval to go out to bid.
Will there be any more city or um, citizen input?
No, not at this point, we have an approved site plan already. We're asking to amend that site plan. Generally, after a site plan is approved. The intent is we follow that site plan as closely as possible, that does not mean minor adjustments. Can't be made through the design because sometime, sometimes it's necessary, you get into design work and you find that something's not aligning the way you thought it would and. There needs to be a minor adjustment. We do not come back to approval of for the, from council or a board for minor adjustments. As long as what is proposed in the final construction drawings are consistent with the approved site plan, we continue on. We also, this, just as a general information. Um, last time I was here, uh, presented Powers Park improvements. We are changing the intent of that park, we're making. There's things that are happening in that park that are not there now, like we're, the continuous loop around the park. Adding additional shade fillings and those things, that's a change in use. So we only do the site plan process for new development and then once we have a site plan in place, we come back if we're. Changing the use in some way, so as long as the use is consistent with the approved site plan, we do not come back to the board or council for changes. In the future. Whether that's as part of the construction drawing set or ten years down the line. And of course, things can change over time, but that's just the way the process is today.
The citizens got to have their say and that there was revision and it was done so quickly. So it seems based on pushing through the comments that most of the citizens are pleased with the revision or the amendment, I guess.
I'm, I'm really grateful for all the work that you've done and the city's done. And I understand why we're mending it and I support it and I, but I in general feel like this amended plan is a step back. Um, in terms of accessibility and safety and community amenities and that the park. The original plan was a better plan for our community. Um, and I'm frustrated especially by. How accessibility seems to be such a low priority for our citizens. And um, this trade-off between crusher fines and accessibility, I think we're on the wrong side of that, so.
I'll second that opinion.
But I absolutely really appreciate your work and that's me complaining about other things, not you and not your work and thank you very much.
Ditto to what Robert's saying, we just spent fifty grand to make a worse plan, but it, this pass is great. Um, that's not on you, I appreciate the time and effort that your team has put into making those revisions, however. It is not this neighborhood's park, it is a city park. It is a public park paid for by all the taxpayers and SSBRD and the city of Littleton. Um, and so spending fifty grand to accommodate a very small group of people's minor considerations. To make the park less accessible and no nature playground was more of a failure than a win, in my opinion.
So because I missed the beginning, so we've gone back to crusher fines.
For a big chunk of it.
A good portion of the park.
Good, that was a good decision.
So we mean concrete.
All accessible, I don't know why you guys keep saying it's not accessible, we already know it's ADA compliant, so I don't know why you guys keep going.
And yet South Suburban has told us.
We can agree to disagree on that, but from a maintenance standpoint.
Look up ADA guidelines.
Well, it's if you put an epoxy on the, on the crusher fine, they're, they don't do that, Patrick. They've, they've told you it's not ADA accessible, I don't know why you can't believe them.
I don't know why you can't believe me and ADA rules. It's the right decision, thank you.
Okay.
Different topic. Um, I, I understand the sort of like concerns about the vegetation and, and maybe safety concerns to some extent. With the fence line at the sort of sledding hill area. Um, but with no real playground nearby. I think that's a great opportunity for kids to be able to go there to sled with their families. So I'm hap- I, I'm happy to hear about the flexibility you all are exercising with that now. And certainly if it becomes an issue, I, I know that you all revisited down the line, but I think that's a, a. Cool thing that those kids in that area probably use all the time in the winter, so I think that's a good idea.
I do feel, and again, it comes out of what are the next steps for Ridgeview Park? And I apologize because I don't mean to expand the conversation, but with the very close proximity of um, Jackass Hill Park and Ridgeview Park. Can we meet some of those needs depending on the public outreach and the comments received specific to that park? Can we meet some of those needs that have been addressed at Jackass Hill at Ridgeview? And that's something I, we can't answer tonight because we aren't that far in the planning process. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I do have one question for you all, but please go ahead.
I have a question, probably more towards Mike here. Does this amendment go more towards. Meeting the goals of Root and Renew or does it take us backwards from Root and Renew? And we spent a lot of time and effort on looking at our. Levels of service and the amenities that we provide and um, we have these documents that help guide us and we should follow them, so I wanna.
Yeah, well, just my own opinion, right? Um, but, but this absolutely moves us towards the goals of Root and Renew, so this is creating, this is creating greater accessibility to.
The amendment, I'm talking about the amendment from the approved site plan.
Sure.
That's what we're.
Not, not current condition to the improved.
We have, we have an approved site plan, right?
Right.
And so we are stepping back from that approved site plan.
Yeah, so. You, I, I do think that the, the original approved site plan by our city council. Um, better aligned with Root and Renew and, and, and making it, like the playground, for example, making that available to this area. Um, but really, when this went in front of our third partner, Arapaho County Open Spaces and the Open Space Trail Advisory Board. Um, they, some of their largest concerns had to do with public involvement and, and, and listening to public feedback. And so, um, you know, they, they had some concerns, some members had some concerns about individual elements, but mostly they said. Go back and listen and, and, and hear, so when we went to the county board of uh, uh, commissioners. And we, we said we will go back and listen and we will make changes based off of here, so you know, we did. And, and, and that's what's, what's happening here, so this, this revision is absolutely inclusive and responsive to. Community feedback, how many community members, that, you know, that's always something that we struggle with, right? And, and uh, and certainly.
So it was fifty-two, is that what?
Well, in this current, in this current open.
Right, that, that's about the amendment from the approved site plan.
So even before we had this, this open public comment period that had fifty-two comments, we were working with residents on getting their, soliciting their feedback and talking to them. Less than fifty-two.
We started with a focus group of adjacent residents and we asked that focus group of. Three to four individuals to speak with their neighbors and come back to us with comments, they did. Some of those comments were addressed, some of those we said, this is not something that we're able to accommodate. Um, the, the, what we're proposing is the direction that um, better meets the. Need of the community and it specifically had to do with putting a crusher fine trail immediately adjacent to the concrete trail. Which is a duplication and the park just does not have enough use to justify a dual trailway. And dual trailways are generally reserved for regional trails, not for parks and park access loops.
As you saw, there was a lot of community meetings and there was a survey, over two hundred people, conducted by South Suburban. This was not just the neighbors, it was.
That was the first go around with the. That led to the approved site plan.
That was the first.
More people that led to the initial, is that what you're?
Um, yes, and it was the kind of um, feeling at that time. That the sixty-eight to, well, I can't remember the exact number, but it was a strong majority of people that wanted to leave the park alone. Um, that was not an option. As for the playground, the concern about the playground was it was too close to the road and that it was not safe. And that was, it wasn't like so much against the playground, although they wanted to keep, many wanted to keep it natural. It was the closeness uh, to Prince Street that was the concern.
Well, I thought, yeah, that was.
That was addressed and they.
Yeah, I thought that was addressed, yeah, to move it further away from there, I thought we addressed that, so. And I think when I'm looking at Root and Renew, I mean, because I think that's when we need to. If we do these plans, we need to base subsequent plans on those plans. And I mean, if you look at the map, this is a, you know, an amenity desert right there. And so I think, I mean, I don't, the crusher fines were his concrete, I don't really actually care about those things. I'm concerned about the accessibility and the safety with the crosswalk. And then the lack of the, I mean, the, the amenity for the children, the, the playground right there, because there are no. Playgrounds within a mile of there, and so I think that.
Aspen Grove is more across the street.
Yeah, Aspen Grove is an easy place to walk to as a kid.
As long as you know it's within a mile.
If not as you walk, are you gonna walk from?
Well, we, it aren't, we, we don't have much open space anymore, I mean, to protect some open space and this is. This is still has amenities and things are changing and it's still developed. But we don't have a lot of places left. That go back to our history of when there was not a lot of development. So I, I, I advocate for um, less development rather than more development.
One thing to note, I suppose, is that, that uh, I, I do believe this revised, revised plan is better than its current condition.
I don't dispute that.
I also think that we've made a commitment to our partners with Arapaho County that we would be pursuing this revision. So if we decided, if, if say we wanted to decide to stick with our, our already approved final site plan. We, we, in good conscience, we would need to not accept that grant money and move forward with our, with, without that six hundred thousand dollar partner.
We wouldn't have that grant. Agree.
We, we told them we wouldn't, we wouldn't use their money without the revision.
That's what they, that's the.
Stipulation.
That they placed on.
It's what grants, I feel like. Pam and I spoke, who else was there?
Andrea.
Yeah, that's what we, what I promised, that's what I feel like I promised to the, to the county commissioners.
So parks are a regular evolution, would it be possible to. At least set aside space or the possibility of adding in a nature, a low-impact nature play area in the future?
Yes, and there's two ways to do that. There's one to identify something for future use to be determined when it's installed. There's also the ability to amend a plan again, so just because we've amended it once, there's nothing that presents. Um, board, council in the future to say we'd like to amend this site plan again, go out to the public, get additional public information. Determine if that's what the public desire and add it at that date, so there's a couple of different ways.
I would be in favor of moving the plan forward as we have it, provided we make some of our own right-of-way improvements. Um, but uh, if we can have at least the consideration for making some of those future improvements if, when that. Disposition changes, I think that would be worthwhile.
There's a process to do so.
Sure. At this point, we just, I, I think we need to make good on the grant, like what you indicated to Echos. Um, we need to make this project happen and get the six hundred grand while it's still available. And I don't think going back and doing further revisions regardless of what we have in front of us, which is good. You know, is worth the time, the effort, the potential loss of that funding.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I appreciate Pam and I with that.
No, I, I agree with that, I'm not saying that this isn't better than what's there now, I just think we're, we're in a better, you know, echo. What Councilman Rickert said, that I thought it was a better, more accessible um, plan overall previously. But I agree with Mayor Rotana, yeah, this is, we should move forward with the county here.
So it sounds like we have unanimous support to move forward with this revision.
Thanks.
May I ask one question, I apologize, and I appreciate your support.
Are you sure? I just got unanimous support, so yeah.
I don't want to surprise anybody. In reviewing this plan in the past few days, there are no benches in this park. So if you're out walking on one of these looped trails and you decide you need a break. Depending on your physical ability or just your desire to sit and enjoy some time outdoors, we do not offer that at all. That is a comment from um, a community earlier, not wanting necessarily formalized benches. However, we've also eliminated uh, discovery trails in other places where, you know, maybe you could have sat on a log or something like that.
Not even at the Vista?
Nope, there, there's boulders you can sit on at that location. Would there be any concerns with adding or at least providing a provision to install benches in the future in this plan in the current site plan? I feel.
That'd be an amendment or?
No, we just do it as part of this plan. Add in some benches, um, style hasn't been determined, anything along that, but beyond that. But meeting the needs, especially of aging populations, of families, providing those places to sit and rest, rest are important.
We did have benches in the approved site plan, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not necess- not designated benches, they were more so of, there might be a log or a rock to sit on. Yeah.
I take it you have some language internal to your own kind of park development process and policy where you have X amount of kind of. Length of walking trail and like an anticipated or projected number of benches per length, is, is that correct?
A set number, um, some of the, sometimes those matrices of like, oh, it's every thousand feet, it's every quarter of a mile, it's every half. They, they, it, some of it is just what generally makes sense in terms of where people are going.
Sure.
It's something we would look at, um, this is a conversation we would also bring in up with the board of directors to say, would you support adding this? To me, this is a basic need that we provide in our parks across the city, across South Suburban. And I am concerned that it's not in this plan today.
I would suggest maybe adding language in there to say, according to our policies and procedures with regards to. Bench placement throughout the rest of our parks, that this could theoretically be applied to this site pending. Site conditions or something along those lines.
How many are you thinking?
I, I don't have a number for you to name.
Forty. I don't walk very far.
I mean, yeah, no, the bench, the benches in the park near my house are lovely and I sit in them all the time, so.
We don't show specific locations for trash cans, those get added into construction drawings.
Or if you have a trash can, I want you to move.
Okay, we can talk about that later. And the citizen, those are details that go into the plans that are reviewed by community development. Development review engineers before projects are approved for construction. Not only South Suburban, but all projects in the city.
Sounds, benches sound great.
I'm in support of benches and also I just wanna, again, I know some other folks have said this already, but express my thanks to you all. For your flexibility on this snap, 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 snap kind of situation here. Um, it's, it's a lot of kind of whiplash, um, and it's expensive whiplash. Um, and you've put a lot of work into this, so I appreciate it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Next presentation.
Do you want to answer Jim? Sure, just real fast, uh, a couple of years ago. South Suburban Parks and Rec assumed operational responsibilities for, for Hudson Gardens. Um, and at that time, they started to do some reorganizing and uh, saw the need for a vision plan and they've. Included us in the, the planning for that, along with other partners. Um, from our team, uh, Mike Gent and our museum director, Tim Nims, who's also our, our key staff for our Arts and Culture Board. Um, were part of that.
And a member of the Arts and Culture Board.
Yeah, and a member of the Arts, uh, the Arts and Culture Board. The reason for that is because the council set some goals back at, at that time for the city to um. Emphasize with South Suburban the importance of reinforcing the connection between South Suburban and downtown Littleton. And particularly our arts community restoring music that had been there, I know, pre, pre-COVID and finding new ways to bring, uh, bring art and. Music and help us to fulfill that goal because it is truly one of the great assets within Littleton, even though it's operated and. Owned by our, our partner, so. Um, with that, I don't know, Mike, if, if you have anything else to add or we can, can turn it over and see a presentation of the vision plan.
So yes, the vision plan, it, it's short to name, but the full name comprehen- comprehensive vision strategic and facility.
So yes, the vision plan, it's short to name, but the full name comprehensive vision strategic and facility plan. So that is definitely a multiple vision plan. But Melissa and I are both excited to present this to all of you. This has definitely been a rewarding process and very eye opening and helpful as we pursue endeavors down there. And we consulted Barry Dunn to help bring all of this information together. So this presentation is very high level. So as we go through it, if you have any questions with any of the finer details of it, please do stop either one of us, we'll tag team through this. So why this plan and why now? So we, as we took over the operation of Hudson Gardens, we really needed to know the roadmap for the future of the gardens. And just to have a better, broader understanding of, of all the facilities, how operations were underway. Kind of when we took over of it, they were still, as many organizations were still coming out of the COVID realm and things weren't as they used to be. We really wanted to understand from the community from all sides and make sure that everybody had all of their voices heard. Obviously, there was the, the larger concert outcry, but in equal standards, there was also an outcry for just keeping the serenity of the gardens as a whole. So we wanted to make sure that not just the loudest voices were heard, but the collective voices were heard. Beyond that, we wanted to get a detailed assessment of the gardens, the grounds and all the facilities. And to better understand their current conditions and make sure that whatever choices we were making down the road, that the infrastructure was in place. And that it can be longstanding in making some of those determinations. As well as evaluating the operations and identifying opportunities. So analyzing all of the, the services, what the financial foundation is and as well as the market comparisons out there. And then definitely give homage to the historical portion of it and how it, it, South Suburban incorporates into that, the history portion of Hudson Gardens. So wanted to make sure all of that was within the breadth of this plan. That way we could have a balanced path forward, as you can see. And so this is kind of, the balanced path forward is kind of a snippet of, to the end game of, of how we got to the vision plan. So I won't go into too big of a, the detail here, because we're definitely going to go into pieces of this. But from all of it, we definitely heard that we're keeping the current breadth of services and offerings, but seek enhancements. Improve the core infrastructure before adding new amenities. Invest in security, accessibility and visitor experience. Continuing to embrace flexibility by defining clear visitor pathways. Strengthening partnerships and funding to sustain diverse offerings and align with South Suburban guiding principles. Which is quality first, connect community, enrich wellness, stewards of nature and sustainability and fiscal responsibility. So community engagement was definitely a heavily piece, heavy piece to make sure that we found all of those that were invested in Hudson Gardens. And as you are all probably well aware, there's a lot of people invested, not only locally, but regionally with Hudson Gardens. So we had a great, we received great feedback. And there was various ways that Barry Dunn and us went, went about that. We, we did stakeholder interviews and focus groups and those focus groups were anywhere from staff, volunteers, community leaders and community partners such as yourselves. And then we had digital engagements. We had a, its own website. There was a interactive map where people could drop a pin and, and make a comment about what they like, dislike, what they wanted to see. And as you can see, it was heavily used with over 2,300 visits to that page. And with over 500 people actively utilizing that page and providing us some sort of feedback within there. There was public input sessions. There was eight pop-up events around the community. And we engaged with 27 local businesses in the area to provide information as people came into their businesses or they could drop feedback as well. And within all of that, there was over 230 open-ended comments received out of those. And then we put together a survey as well and there was over 518 survey responses. And they provided some, some really great feedback. And through that, we have the summary of findings here. And so the major themes through all of that engagement. I'm sure this is, again, no surprise here, but the strong interest in reviving live performances and events. Preservation of the garden experience. Facility and infrastructure needs, so upgrading bathrooms, greenhouse, the rebel garden, all the various areas that are heavily used. And producing some improvements there. Providing educational and interpretive programming. So providing hands-on workshops and interpretive signage to enhance visitor learning and engagement. Volunteer staff, volunteer and staff support, so sustain the volunteer program, addressing staff workload and clarifying internal processes. Improve visibility and marketing. So many residents, which was a little surprising to myself, were unaware of the existing offerings. And which pointed the stronger need for outreach, signage and promotion, especially highlighting free access and community value. And then the event access and affordability, noting that participants value both free and ticketed experiences within there. And then comes the opportunity and needs where we went and just kind of took note of everything that we were doing and everything that was provided inside. So a facility insight assessment, and this is definitely where Melissa's strong background comes into play. But we took a look at all of the different facilities and, and where they were at. And, and found that there was some accessibility challenges, definitely some aging infrastructure. There's safety and security gaps. There's an infrastructure strain, which would support the long-term health. And then there was visitor experience gaps revolving around improvements to wayfinding and experience, uh, experience, customer experience. We took a look at demographics, so noting that there is a diverse audience that Hudson Gardens holds. And the main areas that came out of that were that there was heavily intended by adults, families with children. Higher income families or residents surrounded Hudson Gardens. And also active adults were highly utilized within the grounds. We completed a service assessment, so that's taking a look at all of the opportunities within the grounds, whether that's programs, self-guided programs. Events, rentals and the customer experience within all of those. And then the financial analysis and the program specific insights are kind of one and the same. But looking at what's our cost recovery currently out there? Are we balancing the mission of the gardens versus the revenue coming in? How is sponsorship and grants playing a part in providing that programming and some of those low-cost opportunities? And then what's our expenditure trend within there? And then the market analysis, so we wanted to take a look just how we compared against every other Hudson Garden type out there. And what we found, we are extremely unique. There is not another Hudson Gardens out in the world, I want to say, or at least in the better United States. That we could say, this is 100% something that we could say, we could go back and compare us. Nobody offered exactly what we do in the scope of what we do. So we did our best within the plan. If you browse through the 60-some page, we, we did a very broad comparison of different amenities and program types. Just to kind of see where we fell. And we compared ourselves everywhere from, I think, California, Wyoming. Obviously Denver.
Carolina.
Try, try to find some comparables. And then we took a look at visitor patterns and then opportunities for growth, which we looked strongly at free admission. The peak demand potential in our unique position. And then through all of that, and, and this was a very big breadth of information. And there are many appendix where you can get lost in all of the details through all of these. We came up with the prioritization criteria. And within this prioritization criteria, it also comes back to South Suburban's vision and goals as well. So, so they include the alignment with Hudson Gardens' vision and South Suburban priorities. The infrastructure resilience and long-term viability. The accessibility, security, visitor experience and enhancements. Community benefit and demand-driven development. The sustainability and environmental stewardship and the financial responsibility and funding potential. So you can kind of see as we're moving through this plan, there's a lot of similarities building upon themselves.
When you talk about security, are you talking about people not feeling safe there? Are you talking about like certain paths not having a handle or a railing or something? What are you talking about?
Yes, all of it.
All the, okay.
Yeah, all the above, all the above, yep. So staff security, visitor security, there's, there is no containment, if you will, of Hudson Gardens. And so you can come in on different path areas, whether it's Mary Carter, you can come in off of the street where Jazz car washes or right off of Santa Fe. And yet there's no clear definition of the entrance to Hudson Gardens. So you really have no idea where people are coming from and how to direct them. And then once they're on the property, you know, where are they going? Do they know the different directions? Some of the, some of the comments we were receiving, especially on the map was like, oh, I had no idea this little, this section was in Hudson Gardens without seeing the aerial footage of it. So it was, it was very unique.
Sorry.
I was jerking.
I was not jerking.
Wasn't quite there.
Didn't land it. I was thinking financial, social.
So the path forward, where do we go with all this information and how do we move it forward for inevitably the next 10 years? So we, we received the information that, you know, we're a cherished culture and natural, natural hub for local and community visitors. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through some of the service recommendation at the top, because it really outlines that, a little snippet of what that vision is. But it means finding the right balance between gardens, events and educational programs. While enhancing visitor support, strengthening operational flexibility and reintroducing live performances in a way that respects the garden's unique character. It also involves expanding partnerships, securing new funding sources and aligning close with South Suburban's guiding principles.
Plants like music. I think there's been studies on it.
I do.
That's true.
That's true.
I missed heart. I'm so sad about that.
So with that, they did call out the live performances and there is obviously a draw even within this group. That we're talking about the major live performances that Hudson Gardens once had. And we definitely see that there is an opportunity for it. However, to be successful while we preserve the natural, the nature of Hudson Gardens and the unique character. They're calling out three different opportunities or, or pauses, I guess. One is we need to secure parking. There's just not enough parking at Hudson Gardens for live performances without pulling in a different partner. Whether that be ACC or some other area thing, area partner. So that definitely needs to be addressed. We need to address the access to the infrastructure and the cost. So, you know, do we provide the infrastructure, whether that be some sort of amphitheater that can be onsite? Or do we, do we continue as we have been in the past, bringing on a temporary structure? There's obviously some concerns and costs with that, with all of the in and out and the disturbance to bring a stage of that caliber onsite. And then explore partnerships and funding opportunities to make sure that we recover our costs within those, so.
So are you essentially saying the prior music events were money losers and damaging to the park infrastructure? And moving forward, those considerations need to be taken into, those things need to be taken into consideration?
They do need to be taken into consideration. Now, there's some challenges that are new post-COVID that may not have been present pre-COVID. A lot of the writers that artists request are much heavier and.
We're not talking green M and Ms, are we?
No, I'm not talking about green M and Ms. In particular, the, the green room at Hudson Gardens just does not meet the needs of most artists anymore. And so.
So the facility, so the facilities are not adequate.
Jim, they've asked Jim to sing there, but he just denied that.
Because they didn't give him his green M and M's.
If that says something, that's what's a little hard.
He'll sing, oh.
I heard we lost power when the mic went up to it. I don't know what happened.
So, so, but I mean, I just need to be really, the, the, the music was great, but it lost money and it caused damage to the space. And now, and our facilities were barely acceptable to the artists.
Okay. What were the seating capacity for concerts?
3,000 is roughly, yeah, what we stick to.
Of course, Antschutz Entertainment ever serious about subleasing that?
Antschutz? I'm not familiar with Antschutz, but AED, or AEG, sorry.
Was that an option? Sublease it to somebody?
Yep, we could definitely look into that. There's pros and cons to any of that. Again, you're, that's where, that's where the, the community feedback was unique. There was a very strong presence and want for us to keep the gardens in its natural capacity. And that they didn't want the, the, a true con, summer concert series like they'd seen in the past. So it's trying to find that balance.
I read possibly, it was also looking like inquiring about doing events management there for kind of large live music stuff. And I think too, the new Live Nation facility in Centennial is also like, kind of a weird wrench in the works of having like a venue space. Because now you're kind of in, someone in competition with like a new venue in the south metro area, which we just like didn't have before.
I'll say, when South Suburban gets closer to that, that, those live music decisions. Couple, a prior conversations we'd had is the need for potentially a market study for where that facility might fit. And what kinds of music might work best there. You know, because while we think of those large concerts, there are other competing venues in the area. But there might also be opportunities for, for smaller music. You know, on Friday night, you might have a quartet here and you might have, have something else going on over here. And it just kind of adds to the overall experience that, that could be there. And those were some conversations that I know that the chair of the Arts and Culture Commission and I had had with, with some of the choir staff now for South Suburban.
Thinking more K-pop myself.
Oh gosh, I can't take any more K-pop.
Over into Memorial of Lucas.
Not K-pop.
Not K-pop.
If you're not familiar with K-pop, that's going to be the new Halloween costume that you're going to see in the neighborhood. So you better familiarize yourself.
It's just like there's 10 kids, yeah.
Okay, so moving forward, so out of that again came these capital recommendations. And I will let Melissa take over this portion of it.
So using the criteria that Nicole previously discussed and our operating recommendations. Barry Dunn, our consultant, helped us put together this list of short-term recommendations. We do not have years associated with whether they're short-term or long-term recommendations. We are doing, we're fitting in where we can within the district's five-year CIP capital improvement plan, project plan. And with, you know, annual appropriations, the portions of the short-term recommendations that we can. So one of the first things that we need to complete is a botanical garden master plan. So this is a vision plan and yes, we assessed the grounds, we assessed the buildings. But it's, we need to take the next steps. What are the recommendations now that we've looked at that? We do have funds currently available, remaining from the vision plan that we'll be using additionally. Should the board approve the draft budget as it sits today, there's some additional funding that we could use to envelop, or to include the, some of the facilities with that master plan. And we'd be looking to put out an RFP for this project, probably. And we'd be looking to put out an RFP for this project probably in November or December.
Are those in order of priority or are they?
They're not necessarily in order, they're actually in alphabetical order.
Thank you for helping me with that.
They're intentionally in alphabetical order.
I appreciate the guidance.
Yeah, simply because some things may be easier to accomplish and then it'll depend on when funding is available. Second piece is a branding and wayfinding plan. This is currently underway. And we will be wrapping up a branding study this year. And then with that, incorporating, incorporating that information into our wayfinding, our interpreting signage, visitor orientation. It will extend into a website for Hudson Gardens, for marketing materials and so forth. The cafe and restrooms, and this is the area specifically along the Mary Carter Greenway. And we need to modernize the cafe to expand the menu options and improve vendor operations while updating adjacent restroom facilities for better accessibility and guest comfort. There are dollar amounts associated with each of these. And those are based on estimates provided by an independent consultant. We need to look at our pathways and our accessible routes, upgrade our pathways to ensure ADA compliance, especially as we're looking at event spaces. We need an accessible route from the parking lot to the welcome garden to each of the activity areas within Hudson Gardens. We need to improve our drainage. We do have issues with drainage along our current pathways. And again, ADA compliance, accessible routes, wayfinding signage to key areas like the Bloom Room, the Inn, and other program spaces. Site security, taking it a little bit beyond what was just discussed earlier, installing a perimeter fence, lockable gates, upgrading locks to enhance security while maintaining a welcoming atmosphere. So not only do we need that security, people know where they enter, where they go, but when we're having the events on site, we need to be able to contain people in appropriate areas, right? And if it is a ticketed event, right now, it's very easy to probably make your way into Hudson Gardens one way or the other. So making sure that when we are authoring those types of events, that we're able to secure the site appropriately. Also, Hudson Gardens is open right now from basically sunup, sunup, sundown. And we have no way to secure the gardens after hours. And then finally, within the short-term recommendations, a welcome facility and garden entrance. So this is specifically how you enter the gardens from the parking lot on Santa Fe. And right now, you come through a gift shop. And then you enter into the gardens through the gift shop. And there's no clear directions on where to go from there. We have a welcome tent, which is used in an event space. It's separate from the welcome, the entry and the gift shop. We have restrooms that are separate from the other two. So how do we take those three pieces? Do we incorporate them into one building so that we have an event space that we can also put our administration staff in that area so that when there becomes issues with how operations, that the staff is right there to address them versus right now, they're in another building elsewhere on the site? That also opens up a future opportunity for other uses within the administration building. And the graphics here are just a rough idea of what a space could look like. They're not specific, it's not a plan, it's just to give an indication. Our mid-to-long-term recommendations, these are the next steps of beyond what we just talked about. So actually, making the enhancements to the botanical gardens. The gardens have changed over time from what they were back in early 2000s. There's a few less displays, but there's also different opportunities that have been provided. So are we at the right balance between display, activity areas, event areas? Providing an education center. And that would be, that would come with the opportunity of moving out of the, taking our admin staff out of what we traditionally called the admin building. This is structured, I can show you on a map in an upcoming slide, but it's, it's deeper within the site and offset. But if we can move our, potentially our volunteers and our staff into this other building, either we open up the admin building for our volunteers on a more permanent basis and we provide more space for programming. The live performance space, developing a structure to, a permanent structure to house these live performances with infrastructure and amenities to support various types of live performances and events. And again, what that space looks like will depend on these studies that we're doing and, and understanding the market. So, but before we can even get to that level, we have to provide the basic amenities. And that's what the short-term, those are how the short and the mid to long-range term recommendations work together. The maintenance barn. Right now, the maintenance barn is mostly a storage space. It has some impromptu office space. It doesn't really have, it doesn't have water, sewer, permanent heat, those types of things. So looking at that, do we move our maintenance staff? Use that only for storage and move the actual staff into either the welcome center or the admin building? So how do we make that space work? And we don't have enough outdoor storage for materials. So whether that's materials to maintain the garden, such as refreshing wood mulch, soils, other types of things, we need more space for outdoor storage. The north restrooms, these are adjacent to the Bloom Room. And again, the next slide is a map and we can talk a little bit more about those. But we need to replace those aging restrooms. And those are mobile trailer-type units is what the restroom buildings are now. They weren't, they're not long-term structures. But replacing them with larger, larger, fully accessible facility to better support the Bloom Room, the Rose Garden, and nearby event spaces. We've talked a little bit about parking agreements. But beyond the parking agreements, the actual parking lots need improvements. And this includes paving, wayfinding, lighting, drainage, landscaping, et cetera, to enhance visitor safety and capacity during peak events. And then finally, the river integration project, oh no, sorry, there's one after. It's alphabetical order and the graphics are throwing me off. River integration project. This is a project, it's actually a two-phase project. So phase one is somewhat complete with the old that's outside of, and some of the improvements that were made as you enter the gardens from the Mary Carter Greenway. But these are improvements that actually better incorporate and the, not the Greenway itself necessary, but the land adjacent to the Greenway, the opportunities to look at the river and softening that edge between what is Hudson Gardens and what is the Greenway space. And then there's the overlook. This is an area that's not heavily used by the general public, but it is used for programming. And again, I'll point it on the next map. It's a great space. It's one of the newer spaces at Hudson Gardens. But we are very limited in what we can do with our programming and events because there are no restrooms in the area. And the nearest restrooms require either walking back to the entry or generally walking back to the entry or potentially using the old green rooms for the performance space. So this map, and I understand it's gonna be a little bit hard to see and understand too at this level. But it is something that's available within the vision plan to study it in more depth when interested. But it really outlines where these various areas are. So you can see the parking lot, the, or this to the right, parking lots along Santa Fe or down on this map. Many people, when they took the survey, at least a handful, did not realize that the dirt lot that you see on the left side of the screen is part of Hudson Gardens. And it is, but it's an unimproved dirt parking lot. It's not well-used. We do use it for staging and of events and such, but it's an opportunity for improvement in the future at some point. Looking at our main lots, how do we get people in and through the lot around the Inn? Is in need of some improvements. There's some interesting traffic patterns to look at there. In the center of the map, like I know that orange area is the space where the gift shop, the entry, the welcome tent, the welcome restrooms are located there now. And so how do we incorporate those independent spaces to make them more of a functional building? Where we can move between one and other spaces without necessarily telling somebody, well, if you want to go to the restroom, you need to exit here and go across the little courtyard and you'll find your restrooms. Accessible routes are shown in the orange. It's kind of hard to see on the right side, but above the parking lot, that air, those are the north restrooms adjacent to the Bloom Room. Going north of that, we have the administration or the education center, the future education center, the current administration building. The maintenance barn is along the top of, adjacent to the Greenway. And then as we kind of move our way around, the amphitheater bowl, there is a little bit of maintenance area along the old roadway alignment between the gardens and the seminary. And then the overlook area, the space that we were talking about that's lacking restrooms is just above that dirt lot between it and the amphitheater. And so that kind of just graphically shows a little bit more of what we're looking at. I would encourage that you open the plan and look at, you know, if you want to understand more, refer to the plan within the mission document itself. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those, or attempt to anyway.
What's the next steps? What's the plan?
Yeah, so the next steps are some of the things that we, we talked about a little bit earlier. So kicking off the, we've called in the plan Botanical Garden Master Plan. It'll become more of a grounds and facilities master plan. So it's taking these concepts and how do we apply them directly to what's out there? How, what steps do we need to take to prepare for the future in terms of understanding what the future projects are? How much space is needed for various opportunities? That kicks off this year. Branding and wayfinding is underway right now. And using that events study, it'll help us better define what does cafe and the restrooms need to look like in the future? At least get a preliminary plan or a very conceptual plan that we can build on as we have the funds to work on each of these projects independently. Pathways and accessible routes, it's gonna be a big project. There's a lot of crusher fine pathways, paths within Hudson Gardens. There's several, there's slopes that do not meet accessibility requirements. So we'll need to be looking at those areas. Site security is one that we're hoping to check off the list sooner than later. And then we'll have to just look at the funding that becomes available. And we're looking at welcome facility and garden entrance in the range of 10.7 million to 12.6 million. How, where, where are the opportunities to fund a project like that?
What's your current budget for Hudson Gardens?
I'd say around $3 million.
Around $3 million a year for just maintenance, general maintenance.
Second, the fact that your short-term recommendations, site security included too, like they had some art stolen this last year.
Yes.
You know, like it's, yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a leaky sieve in terms of a site. And plus, you don't want folks wandering around messing with your facilities at night. So like, I think, you know, your priority list is a good one to start with. And you said $3 million in operating expenses? Is that, is that all in like staff labor, like?
Everything but capital.
Everything but, everything but capital, okay. Is there a capital set aside? Like little piggy bank on the side that you're planning to tap into or leverage in the long term?
South Suburban has an overall five-year capital program.
Okay, so it's part of the larger?
So Hudson Garden is wrapped into that larger capital plan. And we, and staff and board evaluate priorities year to year, looking at how do we balance those priorities across the district as a whole? Our facilities, our parks, our communities, how do we balance those dollars?
And then besides the things that you can see, one of the items that we're looking at is as far as the programming. So we see that residents want a balanced pie, if you will, of the programs, the rentals, the events, and, and just the daily self-guided drop-in activities. So we're definitely heavier, probably in the events and rentals than we are the programming. So we definitely need to equal out that pie strategically to make it a little more equal across the board.
Just throwing a random number out there, like, because that's operational cost, like, and pretty much, almost in its entirety. What would that look like if you were, if you were just to throw, do some wish casting on numbers? Is that like a $5 million, $6 million operating budget to get to the kind of educational and programming, you know, that you'd like or?
I think if you have a more, more well-rounded pie, so to speak, it's probably a $500 to $2 million difference than what it is now. And it really depends on the, you know, are, are we talking the big events or are we talking smaller community events, you know? So there's, it all depends.
Like to, but to what you were speaking of, when you were trying to even out the, the metrics on the pie and moving more towards the like regular active programming stuff, that's like education specialists and, and the like, which end up being your operating expense. And if you had to guess it, it would be like, let's say, top end a million dollars additional. So a 25% increase in operating budget?
I mean, you're hoping to, to self-recover that as well. So hopefully, it's not too much of an impact. A lot of our funding is supported by SCFD grants as well. So if we increase some of those programs, we also have the opportunity to increase our funding through that as well. So it, it is a good balance. But some of this does, is, is really highly dependent on finding an additional parking solution as well. Because I think, counting out the, the parking slots, I want to say it's like right around 350, maybe 400 slots. You know, the, the one concert with 3,000 people in there taps out the entire concert or, you know, entire garden or one really good wedding in there. And we could be done, you know, programming. So it is definitely a very challenging space to make sure we don't overprogram what we can park in there.
And it's incremental steps.
Yeah.
So we, we want to balance out that pie, but we have to have the infrastructure in place to support it. So it's not only parking, it's also these building projects that we're talking about. And where do we, how do we manage the event spaces versus the public gardens versus programs and private? It all has to balance one another.
We're getting a hard copy? I know, I know Steve really wants a hard copy. That makes me so happy.
I have the report already, look.
Get the reports on South Suburban's website or on Hudson Gardens. But I'm more than happy to pass a hard version to Mike and we can, okay.
Do not delay that order.
I also really think your prioritization makes sense to me, so I appreciate that.
So right now, in terms of South Suburban's capital plan, you said, was it a five-year?
Five-year capital plan.
How, how's this, how's sort of the longer-term goals, how are those falling into that?
To really move towards those long-term goals, we need to get well through the short-term goals.
Okay.
So as we're identifying and looking at these short-term goals and how do we accomplish them, it feeds into the bigger picture and informs us how to move forward with those long-term goals.
Okay, let me ask a follow-up question then. How do the short-term goals fit into the capital group?
I was just gonna ask that.
So as you mentioned, item number one on this list, Botanical Gardens' master plan is currently funded, as is the branding and wayfinding.
And the branding and wayfinding is coming from lodgers tax funding?
Um.
That's what it said in our lodgers tax.
Okay.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. From that Botanical Garden Master Plan that we're adding additional funds potentially in '26 would allow us to also look at the facilities and not just the grounds. That will help us understand better the cafe and restroom needs. It's gonna help us understand the pathways and accessible routes. It's gonna help identify where are we truly lacking in site security and how can we improve that? And it will set us up for the welcome facility and gardens. So looking at the five-year plan, there is, other than the first two items, basically, there's a plug in there somewhere to, to look at these closer.
Okay.
But that plan, again, it's, the, the only committed dollars are those for the, for the upcoming fiscal year, right? So once the board approves the budget in November, we'll know what the projects are in '26. When we prepare the '27 budget, we also massage the five-year plan.
Which is also why we kept it to short and long-term goals because to identify a year would set us up for failure.
Yeah, that's really like the core of my question is, I'm, I'm trying to just envision for myself here what timeline looks like for this? I understand that it's a year-by-year thing to a large degree. So thank you. No, thank you. I think this looks good. And it's, I'm glad, you know, that the lodgers tax funds that were provided to do the vision plan here in previous years is yielding some good results. Is, I just, the question I have is, what maybe was different or unexpected going through this? Or is it kind of what you thought it was gonna be at the end, the vision plan?
I don't think I, I didn't expect to get anything different out of it. What I was hoping that I would though, because it's very challenging to hear- What I was hoping that I would though, because it's very challenging to hear from the community do everything all at the same time.
Right now?
Yes. So I was really hoping for some really, some really good direction, like we really want, everybody wants the concerts and that's everything that you should focus on, but no, it was, it was equal all over the place. So it really wasn't any surprise and it's just part of the privilege to be out there and try to make it all balance.
Sounds like our prior conversation. Sounds like the conversation. This is not going to be, communications conversation is not going to happen next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you much.
Thank you.
We'll take a quick four-minute break, all right?
Yep.
Nice. Different kind of recess. There we go, all right, and we're back. Got Jessica Bixman with Communications?
Are we actually, are we actually back?
Well, the presentation's there, but yeah, are we, are we back?
Yes.
Okay, we're back.
So tomorrow, tomorrow marks six months on our team for our Communications and Marketing Director Jessica Bixman.
She's still here after being at the retreat for the very first.
Still coming back, right, she came back then and she's still coming back. I'm just very pleased to be able to have this session with her tonight. I know when Jessica started, you know, communications and community engagement have been a priority for, for council for, for some time. And we all wanted to kind of hear kind of where we might, where her leadership might help us go. And we wanted to, we encouraged her to take some time, and she's been doing that. I think she's been learning, observing, but also Jessica's been assertive already with our leadership team on, you know, how to be more proactive, how to think more strategically about communication. And I think also her expertise and really passion for community engagement has come through too. So I think tonight, our, our goal and our, our hope is that Jessica could just kind of share a bit about the, about her organization within the city. And, you know, some of the, of her, her impressions for where we're, where we'll be going. I'll just mention as a, you know, flair for the coming week. You know, communicate, community engagement, which is kind of a headline for a lot of things. You'll hear about that tonight and then that will also be kind of a priority and a topic that we'll talk more about at the council's budget, budget retreat on Saturday. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jessica and ask her to take it over.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for giving me an opportunity tonight to talk about communications and the program here, what I've learned over the last six months at Littleton, about where we are and where I would like to see us go. So tonight, I'm going to be going over some objectives, just about, you know, effective municipal communication and what that means to me. I want to talk about the current state of the Communications Department as I see it, what my vision is for our future, and then also talk about what's on deck for twenty twenty-six and, and our work plan for priorities. So starting with just our vision and mission statement, which is really at its heart to support the goals of you all, to support City Council to maintain comprehensive communication plans that contribute to our level of understanding and trust between the city and the many constituencies it serves. So what is effective public service communications? What does that really mean when we talk about communications? And really at its core, it's understanding first who our audience is. So that's our community, obviously our residents who are diverse groups that have diverse needs. Our business community who are important community stakeholders, and then also our community engagements. We have lots of nonprofits and volunteer groups, local associations, et cetera. Our visitors, those that visit and invest in our local economy and contribute to our city's sales tax revenue. City's staff, this is our most important asset. And oftentimes, it's our frontline connection to our community, not just city staff, but all of you sitting at this table, elected officials, our advisory board members, and also our volunteers. And then, of course, our media partners, our public relations really does build trust. With our local media outlets, we want to build a strong brand and this also ensures that we're shaping the public perception of Littleton. So here's just a very basic model of an effective communication strategy. We're developing our message to inform and educate. We have then engaged with the community to build trust. So Littleton is evolving. We're not a small suburban town anymore, we're a leading full-service city. And as we grow, this stimulates corresponding investment in our infrastructure, in our services and our resources to meet those new demands. We know that our residents are really passionate about Littleton and it is scary to hear that it could change. Change can be scary and uncomfortable at times. And so it's really important now more than ever that we're aligning our messages to our strategic goals and our priorities. And we really need to be sharing the why before we try to share the what. From there, we can choose strategies to inform and educate, to deliver timely and accurate information to the community at all times and engage them, drive meaningful engagement and be responsive to the community so that we continue to build trust. So here are some just basic effective communication goals. We want to be transparent, accountable, authentic. A big one for me is to be strategic and not so reactive, consistent in our communication, collaborative and inclusive. So Communications Department as it is today, this like kind of just highlights all of the different events and services and priorities that we have, tools in our toolbox, if you will, for the Communications Department and all of the areas that we service externally and internally as well. So I'm going to go through these one by one, starting with social media. So across all of our platforms, we have a little over thirty-two thousand followers with Facebook being our most heavily followed. And so when I started in March, social media strategy was really an area that I saw that we could have some improvement and change our strategy with how we're using our social channels. So I hope that you all follow our Facebook especially and have noticed some change there. But really, I wanted to shift away from the way that we were using social media in that, you know, thinking about social media as a tool for two-way conversation, thinking about it as more of a marketing tool than just a communications tool. More engagement and posts, videos, reels, instead of just notifications that aren't relevant to our entire, the entirety of our followers. So I would say around May is when we really started to make that shift in strategy. In June, we saw that this new approach resulted in record-high engagement rates across all of our platforms, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn and Twitter. We set the year's highs for Facebook and LinkedIn audience growth rate. And we set the year's highs for Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn page reach, just after that first month. In July, we set record highs again. We had record-high views across all of our platforms, more than two hundred and eighteen thousand views. And then again in August, we had three hundred and forty-three thousand views, which is about as many views as the previous three months combined. It continues to be our highest month so far and our highest engagement year, engagement rate of the year so far. And so that's just been really rewarding to see the numbers speak for themselves.
Question about social, do you know roughly how many are residents? How many are unique? I know, I mean, if one person has four accounts, you know, we got one person rather than four people.
We can do a deeper dive into the metrics for sure. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but.
Look at X, how many of those are just bots, since that's, that's all that's, is used for now?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we can, we can definitely take a deeper dive into the metrics. You can get really in the weeds with the metrics. So that's something we can definitely look at further. Sorry, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but.
When we talk about all the social posts that we're doing and we hear from residents like, I'm not on social media, I don't see it, so.
Yeah, it's definitely not the only tool to get information out, for sure.
And then second, along with that, with the post notifications, how are you, are you doing any paid advertising with the focus on just to residents? Because you can, I know, you know, you can do that, focus only to people that live with the city.
Yes, so we haven't done any, to my knowledge, historically, have not done a lot of boosted posts. It's not to say that that's not something I want to do, I would love to get to that place. And I'll talk about that in a little bit here. To me, that falls more under a marketing or advertising campaign and that's more of what I want to be doing. Not a lot, we, we do do a lot for Visit Littleton, we just don't do it a lot for the city as a whole. And so.
If there's notification on whatever meeting or whatever you want, you can put it on there. If four thousand of those eleven thousand Facebook people are residents and they just happen to see it, whereas if you boost it, you can basically force it upon them and they will see it.
Yes, and that is a tool that we can utilize. Obviously, there's a cost associated to it, but it's rela, it's relatively cost-effective to, you know, there's a lot of bang for your buck there. Okay.
Those little thumbs downs?
No, it wasn't the record again, it went probably down. We had, we were all, most, I think we were all there.
Need, need, yeah.
No, it did.
So video production and streaming, again, lives in the Communications Department. We publish videos and reels on Facebook. We do a lot of community campaigns, develop department programs, meetings, events. A lot of our media production has shifted to content creation for Visit Littleton as well. These are just numbers just for year-to-date. So for twenty twenty-five, over two hundred and seventeen thousand views for our YouTube channels. And then you'll see Facebook views are over a hundred and thirty-six thousand for the seventy-two videos and reels we published so far. Then our newsletters, so our Littleton Report. In twenty twenty-four, the resident survey we put out said eighty-three percent of respondents said the report was a major source of their info and another twenty-eight percent said that. LRO, our Littleton Report Online, was a major source of info. Our Littleton Report Online is up fourteen percent in subscribers from the beginning of the year in January, so that's great. One of the other things that we, that I heard and observed as a new employee that, was that we could really improve our internal employee communication as well. So, you know, there's a saying that strategy starts in the break room, not in the newsroom, and I truly believe that. So Communications launched a internal newsletter for employees, we call it Littleton at Work. You'll see that on the screen there. It goes out every two weeks and we include regular features, news stories that are important for employees to know. We do a celebrating you section to recognize new hires, milestone anniversaries, employee accomplishments. We have updates from other departments, HR, IT. And then it's also, there's always a question to engage employees, a fun question about Littleton to give them to answer. And we report on those in the next newsletter.
Sorry for keep interrupting with Littleton Report Online. I know we've been pushing that to get people out there because it's regular information. Have you talked to other departments? I know we send a sewer bill to everyone in the city. Could we put something on there, like on the bill, saying, hey, sign up for Littleton Report on here to do some cross-promotions?
Definitely, yes. And, yeah, we want to get as many subscribers to, you know, the report online as we can. I think that there's a lot of work to do there if we only have three thousand signed up. I am going to talk about in a news, a later slide, we are going to be refreshing the report online and actually moving it to a different digital platform. And that's going to have a lot of features that are going to make it easier for people to sign up for, not just the whole report, but all. not just the whole report, but also if they're interested in a specific topic, they can sign up for that too. So graphic design and print services. We house the print management. This is also a brand awareness for us. We do inter-departmental design for other departments to create materials for them, produce the calendar and the annual report and then of course, the online report and the print report production and design. Year-to-date, we've completed two-hundred-and-seventy-seven total tickets already and printed about thirty-six-thousand items. So here's a list of our events for the year and I do think it's important to differentiate them between what I would consider our community events, which are really more focused on smaller, bringing people together to strengthen community connection. A lot of times, we're sharing information through these events with the community versus a larger festival, which is more about the experience, generally centered around culture, art, food, music, that kind of thing. Meet, greet and eats. I know you all have seen some updates to that event this year. So we changed the layout to bring individual tents instead of everybody being under one tent. We've also added a fun little bingo game that we've heard great feedback about, people liking that format and being able to go talk to the different city departments there, get their questions answered and have conversations that way. Little jams, we had four this year. Two of them, we combined with existing events that were larger, so the block party and then Western Welcome Week. And then of course, we have the Criterium and our Candlelight Walk.
Add the, instead of the bingo, add like council foursquare, you get four council members in a row they talk to.
Good idea. Visit Littleton. So we manage and market the Visit Littleton brand across our platforms to increase awareness with events and businesses. We do that through our website and social media, paid advertising and marketing campaigns. So we are now represented on Colorado.com for the first time. We have a working partnership with the Colorado Office of Tourism. We have a full-page ad in our first field guide that's placed in all ten welcome centers across Colorado. And we also have a thirty-second video ad that plays on repeat at the Julesburg Welcome Center. And so these are just some photos of some of the paid ads we have out there with the Colorado Office of Tourism.
So the presentation last week from the Arts and Culture Board made it clear that we're investing like a hundred thousand dollars in Visit Littleton. And it's just gonna sound more antagonistic than it means, but you know, that's a hundred thousand we're not doing as arts grants. And so I think it's important for Visit Littleton to be, to have a clear value add. I know it's, in some ways, still just starting, but.
Yeah, I definitely think there's a lot of conversations that we could continue to have about Visit Littleton and, you know, what it is and what we want it to be, what we want it to see it become in the future. You know, as it stands, it's, it's really not resourced to be solely supporting, you know, an increase in lodgers tax, right? Like, we want to create a brand for Littleton and serve the community that's here. We wanna bring visitors, we want them to spend their money, go eat downtown, have an experience here. But we aren't gonna be competing with those larger cities that have large-scale venues. You know, we're talking about Hudson Gardens that are bringing in concerts that people are gonna stay overnight. We don't have the corporate, you know, hotels that are gonna bring in large-scale conferences that are gonna have multiple stays for multiple days that are gonna contribute. So I do think that we need to, you know, have a goal for Visit Littleton. The lodger's tax, essentially fifty percent of that is going to supporting just to keep the website going. And so I do think that that is an important conversation, but I also think that there are a lot of partnerships that are still, can still be built there between the hotels and the businesses and we're, we're trying to do a lot of that now. We're gonna be starting a networking group in November with, you know, all the key partners to try to have those conversations, like, what events are you doing and how can we support them? How can we market them? Are you partnering with a hotel, letting your attendees know? So we're gonna be facilitating a lot of that conversation moving forward, so.
Did I just hear you say we're spending fifty thousand dollars on the website just to visit Littleton website maintenance?
So for the website and the SEO management, yeah, it's about that.
Do we have a contractor that's doing that or where is that fifty thousand?
Yes, it goes to culture. Yeah, we do have a contract for that.
And then speaking of CTO, have you, Tourism Office, applied for or what's the history of doing they have, rather than pay for the CTO to provide ads for us, they have grant opportunities?
Yes, and we do, we did get some grant funding, yeah. Okay, so also, this is all stuff that is new this year. City Lifestyle Magazine, so we are in this magazine with an ad that has a distribution list of nearly sixty thousand. It spotlights our events, businesses and the economy in Littleton. Open Rewards, partnering with economic development on the Open Rewards program to continue to grow that. We also will, you know, advertise and promote those special days on social media and on any other avenue that we can. Social media growth, so in August of twenty-twenty-four, the Visit Littleton Instagram page had two-hundred-and-thirty-nine followers. Today, it has close to twenty-five hundred. And we've also done some really fun organic posts. We partnered with the museum recently and the downtown Littleton merchants to promote the Littleton's first dinosaur exhibit. All the boutiques, restaurants, bars joined in and started offering dinosaur-themed things, so drinks, menus, toys. I think somebody even created a dinosaur-themed lip balm. But our post did really well, had a really awesome reach and so that was fun to see. And then, like I said, some of that funding does go to our SEO optimization, which we see that through our website, organic traffic. So from July twenty, so sorry, the number for July twenty-twenty-five was an increase of twenty percent, twenty-seven percent from July of twenty-twenty-four, so. And then also our page views increased. They were up thirty-six percent from the same time compared to twenty-twenty-four. We also have done a lot of work to try to get events on our Visit Littleton events page. So it had only five events listed in late August of twenty-twenty-four. And now if you visit that website, you'll see that there's lots of community events featured. And it's really, it really can be, you know, one spot, go-to place for events that are happening in Littleton. So Communications, I really, I just wanna take a second to call out the difference between Communications and Marketing. So when we're trying to communicate something, it's about informing and connecting. We wanna report accurate, clear information, timely information to the public and media. These are all the ways we do that. Public media, public relations and media relations. We facilitate a network of local PIOs, so this could be, you know, county PIOs, South Suburban a lot of the time. Public information campaigns, emergency and crisis communication, also internal communication and speech writing. And then here's just an example of how, if I was a PIO, this is how I might write a traffic alert. Lane closure on Broadway beginning Monday. Starting Monday, September fifteenth, traffic on Broadway will be reduced to one lane for resurfacing. Versus, if I was a marketing coordinator, I might say it this way. Smoother roads ahead. Broadway upgrades begin Monday. We're investing in better, safer streets for our community. Beginning Monday, September fifteenth, crews will be resurfacing to extend the life of the roadway and improve your daily drive. So this is more about.
I was like, I would like the first one.
So this is more about that promoting, driving awareness and participation in the servicer program. So this is more of, you know, the advertising, the digital print, branding and design, market research, social media, paid social media campaigns like you were mentioning, influencer marketing and then website design and SEO. This is a lot of what we do for Visit Littleton, but again, not a strategy that we've really utilized for other city programs, services, information. So media relations, proactively building relationships with our local media and finding the best ways to work with them. So we do this through press releases, press releases, pitching stories, writing talking points, facilitating interviews and responding to media inquiries. So one of the things that we hadn't been doing proactively was reaching out to media for positive coverage. And so the storytelling element is something that was really important to me to, to be proactive about again. And so staff have really embraced that and these are examples of a couple of stories where we were able to, to tell the why and not just the what, and the media picks up on that. And so these are two great examples that we had. We also recently had another great story about the green business program and sustainability that was done as well. And these, you know, like I said, these don't happen by accident. These are very intentional, us trying to get positive coverage for Littleton. So basically, my discovery analysis is this. Our strengths, the teamwork on the communicate, in the Communications Department is amazing. The staff are all, the staff morale is really high. They are all willing to pitch in and do anything, you know. On Criterium Day, we are all event coordinators. Everyone is willing to help anyone out with anything they need. It's been, to be honest, one of my favorite teams that I've ever worked with. And so they're all just, they're just great and super dedicated. And extremely adaptable. I've come in and I've really, you know, challenged the way that they'd been doing things, asked them to take on new responsibilities, think outside the box. They've all been so willing and open-minded and, you know, wanting to learn and eager to try new things. And I've also seen them pivot, drop what they're working on and pick something else up. And everybody maintains a really positive attitude in doing that. Dedicated and passionate, and I don't just mean the Communications Department. This is across the organization. Employees here, they love working for Littleton. They love their work. They really wanna do what's best for the city. The leadership team all works really well together and so I would definitely say that that is one of our biggest strengths. We have positive collaborative relationships with our business community and organizations, community organizations and our partners. And we have a super-engaged community. They're, they're listening and they wanna be involved and they wanna participate and I think that that's a great opportunity for us as well. So weaknesses, limited resources. I mean, we are really small for the amount of things that we do in our department, the amount of initiatives that we have happening. And we're continually adding to that. So you can have all the tools in the world, but if you don't have the people that can facilitate the utilization of those tools, it's really not helpful. So that is, that is a real struggle and a challenge for us. The quantity of initiatives, not just, you know, for workload of staff, but for the community too, you know, community overload and fatigue. When we have a large number of complex projects happening at the same time, that's a significant challenge from a communications perspective. And I don't think historically, we've done the best job of prioritizing or sequencing those initiatives necessarily. Internal communications, I do think that we are doing much better with this, but traditionally departments are used to operating in silos and communication hasn't been regular. So we just really have to continue to make progress on that and become more cohesive. But that takes time and it does take intention to think about, you know, who all needs to be involved from Communications when you're, you're working on different projects. Lack of process and policy. So that has been something that was really apparent to me in the Communications Department. We really struggled with lack of process and that contributed to a lot of inefficiency and reduced productivity. As I was learning and people were asking me how I wanted to approach this thing or that thing, a lot of times, you know, I would ask, okay, well, what is our policy? And come to find out, we either don't have a policy at all or the policy is so outdated that it's not relevant. And so that makes it really difficult for staff, you know, to make equitable decisions, but also they don't feel empowered to make decisions because they don't have anything to go off of. And then brand consistency, we have decentralized a lot of our communications and that's happened out of necessity over the years. But we have to be able to take control over our communications channels. The integrity of our brand really does rely upon that and the proper use of so many different city departments and employees. And then engagement, we have some really high priority projects coming up in the near future that are gonna require a significant amount of input from the community and we have an opportunity to collaborate and partner with them in a more strategic way than we've done in the past. Marketing and advertising, as I've mentioned a few times now, you know, with the exception of Visit Littleton, marketing is not something that we've traditionally done. We've done a lot of communicating, but we haven't done a lot of marketing and advertising and that is really something that I see the need to do. They have to work together. And then new technology, we just need to lean in to all the new technology that we can to be able to be as efficient as we can, especially when we have limited resources. And then the website is another opportunity. It's also a unique challenge for me. I'm not used to having the website not being a part of the Communications Department. Currently, our website lives with IT. But luckily, I have a great, we have a great partnership with IT and so we've been able to work with them on our website. So the vision for the future, how do we become more strategic and less reactive? Create unified messaging, engage our audiences more deeply and then leverage technology to bring our documentation and processes up to date. So this is what the future of the Communications Division could look like. We have to start doing more strategic planning. I would love to see us get to a place where we can develop comprehensive communications plans through every department that align with our mission and helps plot a unified course forward. But in order to be able to do that, we have to build capacity. So much of my focus in the first six months has been on finding ways that my department can do more with the same amount of resources. And so this is meant really realigning staff responsibilities to strengthen our overall capacity. I have to make sure that each member's skills are being utilized where they make the biggest impact and I also want them to be passionate about their work and to stay engaged. And so we've had to shift things around. Again, processes, we haven't done a great job of making sure that roles were clearly defined. When I started, I couldn't believe that there was literally no task management in place. Everybody was doing their own task management tracking and at a different way. Everything is extremely manual. Essentially, everything is done through email. No workflows were coordinated. We didn't have a formal way of tracking really anything, taking requests, approving things, shared calendars. So I've been working a lot on just getting those basics in place to make staff more efficient and also helping them collaborate together much easier than they, they ever have. And then policies, having, you know, the proper policies in place to be able to be consistent and fair and empower staff. Um, and then policies, having, you know, the proper policies in place to be able to be consistent and fair and empower staff. But essentially, you know, effective communication requires that we have the resources and in, internal infrastructure that will support those strategies. Uh, we have to have dedicated time to plan and execute, evaluate. And also, you know, be able to do some more of that proactive storytelling and brand management and make sure that we're strategically aligned across all of our departments. So collaboration and technology, um, you know, communications is really built from the inside out. Our marketing team is, our marketing communications team is small, um, and we aren't all subject matter experts. So we really need staff to start to see themselves as an extension, um, of our office and help to amplify our message. You know, we all know that the community doesn't differentiate the different departments. They hear that you work for the city or that you're city council and they expect you to know any, you know, any tidbit of information on a multitude of topics. And so it's just so important that we continue to foster culture of information sharing internally. I like to say that we're all office influencers. Uh, and staff need to start considering communications as a part of their job because we should all be ambassadors of this work. Streamlining, we need to improve and develop our workflow and project plans across, um, all of our departments and for all of our key initiatives. And a lot of the work you've heard, um, about, from Adrienne about her project management system, I, I'm really hopeful that that's gonna help us in this area. And it will for major projects, but there's still a lot of work to be done for our day-to-day, uh, workflows and information that needs to get out to the community in a timely manner. And then consistent messaging, just being clear and concise, timely again, and leveraging technology to have the tools in place to continue to operate as effectively as possible.
Before you move on from that, just because I thought that was kind of one of the core parts of my questions regarding the technology. You mentioned a couple of times, like, do we have like a CRM or like a ticketing software, even for just like community requests beyond just public work, see click fix stuff? Like, is there inter-departmental external facing, anything like that in terms of CRMs? Or process or task management in that regard?
Not that I know of. See Click Fix is the one.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
But like functions across departments, but it's not the end all be all.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, it, it's a pared down, very omnidirectional version of a CRM. But yeah, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Okay. And then, um, exploration and innovation. The only constant is change. There's a lot of creative and innovative solutions, um, we could be implementing, but we have to be deliberate in carving out time to allow for this creativity and to explore new ways of doing things. This is definitely gonna be a cultural shift for the organization to embrace the curiosity of learning. Um, I'm constantly asking staff to challenge the idea that, you know, we've always done it this way, so we have to continue to do it this way. Um, I'm always looking for outside the box solutions, um, and ways to do things differently. Diverse perspectives, just encouraging the different viewpoints, um, and generating new ideas from that and fostering our long-term growth and adaptability. So community engagement, you all have heard that I have a passion for community engagement and the importance of strategic engagement as we move forward. I really think that we're at a critical place where we have the opportunity as an organization to involve the community on a deeper level, um, with some of our high priority projects. But we have to have the tools in place and the buy-in to be able to do that. So starting with a framework, um, using the spectrum of public participation that outlines our five levels of community engagement. From there, um, we can implement toolkits. We can develop some internal equity toolkits to give departments with a set of questions that will help them, uh, view decisions from a different equity perspective. And then provide training, opportunities for staff to help continue to build their skills and knowledge on how to collaborate with diverse groups. Visit Littleton will continue to be, um, you know, a main focus to attract visitors to Littleton, encourage repeat visits and longer stays, to drive economic impact through visitor spending, enhance our image and promote the unique experiences that set us apart. So I just want to revisit this slide one more time. Um, this shows all of the tools, like I mentioned. And I want to compare this to the future of the communications department, which to me looks more like this. So building comprehensive communications plans is more about, more than just sharing information. We have to be thoughtful in our strategy development and that starts with aligning our messages to our priorities and city goals. Our success is dependent on the collaboration and technology. We have to be able to partner across all of our departments and leverage digital tools and streamline our processes. A strong plan will also embrace exploration and innovation, seeking out new ideas, creative approaches and new platforms to keep our communication relevant. And lastly, lastly, we need to be listening as much as we inform, creating meaningful two-way conversations to build trust through our community engagement. So that brings me to 2026 work plan and priorities. Again, to continue fostering that, you know, culture of information sharing, I'm going to be, um, giving a communication and engagement training in a few weeks to the leadership team. We're gonna go over just some communication strategy, but also crisis communication training to talk about how we would all work together, um, if a situation were to arise. Community engagement again, um, is a huge focus for 2026. And you all are gonna hear, um, this weekend at the budget retreat that, um, you know, I did request through the budgeting process to add a full-time employee that would be dedicated just to supporting community engagement. And the initiatives that we have coming up, our highest priority projects. Uh, I really think it's important that we have an internal, uh, staff person that has the capacity to proactively help plan, um, some of these strategies and implement them, measure our efforts. Instead of relying on consultants and to do that in a fragment, fragmented approach, uh, that we have been using, um, in the past. I really think that, you know, this person i- is invested in a different way than a consultant in the community and understanding the departments and the project managers, um, and the relationships they build with staff and with city council. And will help ensure that, you know, the consultants are, uh, doing community engagement in a way that, you know, we've said we really want to see it done, uh, moving forward. Um, and part of this, one of the things that I wanted to implement right away, um, for us was Engagement HQ. And so that is been a work in progress over the last several months. It's a digital public engagement platform, um, that's gonna provide us a central location for all of our engagement initiatives. So that's, we've been working on that, um, in partnership with IT over the last several months. We're in the training slash building phase currently. But again, this position would also support that digital platform and making sure that we have all of our high priority projects in a centralized place that we can drive the community members to, to get all their information and engage with us there in a different way. And, um, with that is gonna come some additional tools that we will have available to us that we haven't had, um, in the past. Some of that will be reflected in the refresh and rebrand of the Littleton Report online. We're gonna be switching platforms. Um, so we were using one platform to mail out the report. It's gonna be switching. And so we're gonna take the opportunity to give it a little bit of different look and feel. So more to come on both of those projects, but they're in the works currently. I mentioned the website. Uh, we are also going to be leading a website refresh. Um, I think that the homepage, um, from a design and customer experience perspective could use some updating. So we're working on that again in partnership with IT, um, over the next six to nine months. Uh, we'll be doing, um, some updating to those pages and then they'll be implied, uh, applied to the rest of the internal pages throughout the website as well.
Which website? Visit Littleton or the?
No, the city website. Yes. Um, sorry, I should have clarified. The Visit Littleton website is actually getting a lot of updates currently too, but they're, they're more of, um, like just layout.
And we just have a new website just fall 2022.
Okay, um, sorry, I lost my place here. And then, um, again, policy focusing on updating our policies or creating policies that we don't have. Focusing on Visit Littleton and continuing to market Visit Littleton. And then I wanted to also just mention, next year will be the 150, 250 celebration because that's easier to say. Says we semi-quintennial.
And it's actually not a real world word. It's a big up word that they squished, uh, sesquicentennial.
So we, uh, basically for the next year, 150, 250 celebration, we've been up there, we have more to, we'll have more to report on that hopefully soon, but, um, we've applied for some grants, um, to help support efforts to celebrate that next year. Their first grant we applied for was with History Colorado. We did not get that grant. And so we've applied for a second one, um, and we'll hope to hear on that soon. But really what we want to do is be the central marketing location for all things 250, 150 and work with our partners to leverage the events, programs, um, activities that they're already doing, but applying that 150, 250 theme to it. And then we'll be promoting it through all of our city channels and through Visit Littleton as well. So I will leave you with this quote, if communications is not your top priority, all of your priority, all of your other priorities are at risk.
Questions, council?
Great job.
Lots of changes.
I thi- I think positive ones. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's so alarming to me that there was, there's not in- internal processes to track tasks and that much of it is being done over email. That's mind-boggling to me. And that's how you lose things through the cracks. So I'm very happy to hear that that's something that you all are working on, as I'm sure you are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very data-driven, very organized. Um, and so immediately that was something that we had to address. Yeah.
I have a kind of a question for the city manager and I know the comment you brought up with the website. I know there was a change while back of the website going from communications to IT. Is there been discussion about that? Because I think it, the example of the street maintenance, of how you, uh, position a statement and, you know, put it to the public there is different. I think IT has a very different mindset than communications. And, uh, our website, both of the websites are public-facing. And I think there might be some advantage to.
I, I agree. And, uh, without getting ahead of other discussions in the works, we agree.
But the bottom line is more council pictures on the front page, right? That's, that's what we're going.
That's my takeaway.
Yeah, yeah, great. Good. Good job.
Just Robert. All's, all that's all he just wants to say.
That's right.
Just, just put a mirror on his computer screen and he'd be happy.
Maybe I could turn my camera on and just watch myself.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's a larger here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Stick with us.
All right. Um, and then let's see, we got one more tiny little thing to talk about.
Forty-two slides.
Can we do it in an hour? I would love to do it.
Well, the agenda says ninety minutes, so we'll see.
I thought it was four slides, Jessica.
Next victims come to the, come to the table. They're kind of hesitant back there.
We might need.
Why they do, I'm gonna run to the restroom.
We could ask, I think, uh, Patrick and Robert, if you wouldn't mind this way a little bit.
Sitting closer to, to, uh.
I think we're gonna have a cast of thousands of people.
You never do. I'm teasing you. You know, right? Pure. Yes, yes.
The more the merrier. I'm moving over. I'll move over if you want to, so.
Okay.
Somebody can sit between us too. I don't care.
Tell us what you need in Littleton.
Pretty sure.
I mean, that's the killer card.
Somebody will sip that espresso up at nine-thirty at night.
You just, now that the bar has been set for Saturday, I am ready to go. I know what the expectations are.
He's talking about presentation.
Oh, and I will. Bar is set by you. Oh, I said, now that, now that I know how high the bar is set for Saturday, I'm, I'm gonna be supplementing my presentation materials, some light reading, perhaps a treatise. Let me get a CLE credit out of this one.
I think he's got fired.
An executive order?
Executive order?
Oh, yeah, Saturday. Has been raised for, uh, for staff presentations now. Yeah, not by me. I'm bringing this down.
This slide isn't even numbered, but I have it.
Yeah, we've got a new artistic design for this slide here.
All right.
That was not according to the branding policy that the city.
All right, let's, let's get moving. All right, long-term capital financing. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, this session follows up on the, uh, the, the work session we had at the council's retreat about our long-term capital needs, really focusing on those that are most ready for action, um, and how we might plan for and pay for those. So, uh, we heard, um, questions, I think some really good questions that, that warranted some more, some more research, and that's really what we're, we're back to you tonight for. So I'm even gonna shorten my intro, Mayor. Note the date. Uh, I will say that we are looking for council's direction if, if possible, your, your further, uh, direction on, um, projects that might be included in a, uh, in a certificate of participation issued next year as we look at, at that. And then also which, if any, should really be thought of as more of a general obligation bond candidate project. Just want to mention, really a focus tonight though is also on, um, broadening from that session in March, from the projects that are ready now to how we start to build a culture and a philosophy of planning for all those needs that we know we have, especially in light of that facilities assessment that we heard. So I think where we wanna, we wanna talk about how to handle, how to move forward on those, those current projects, but also kind of look for how we can start to set that vision and that practice for addressing big needs with the resources that we have o- over, you know, the next couple of decades. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our team. I think you know most of them. I will reintroduce Melissa Buck, who is our financial advisor from UMB. And Adrian Burton, our, our director of major projects, has coordinated this effort and she will, uh, lead the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight we'll be walking through.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight we'll be walking through a comprehensive discussion on long-term capital financing. Uh, this study session is, is designed to frame both near-term project decisions and the broader roadmap that positions Littleton for success over the next decade. The intent is to provide options, so you have the full picture of where we are and what tools are available as we think about our capital field. So here's tonight's agenda. We'll begin with a quick recap from our retreat in March, as well as some things that we taught, talked about when we came back for our recap of the retreat in May. And then we'll walk through some updates on a few of our major projects. We'll be talking a little more in-depth about Project Downtown, Main Street improvements, and then some long-term financing tools. And as, as Jim spoke to, um, some long-term thinking about, um, a larger framework. And from there, we'll shift into council considerations and policy guidance before closing with questions. So at the council retreat in March, council requested further discussion around Project Downtown Main Street improvements, uh, which prompted the other opportunity to study through the lens of an infrastructure assessment, as well as an economic impact study, which is currently underway. Council also emphasized the importance of integrating the community voice and optimizing our financial tools for greater capacity. And then previously, council emphasized these three key themes, so caution with debt service, focus on readiness and long-term economic return, and preserving a healthy three A fund for resilience. So those principles guide the way staff has framed today's discussion, balancing flexibility, sound investment, and preservation. So before we go into specifics, it's worth reminding ourselves that no single funding tool is the answer. Generally, each comes with its own set of trade-offs from certificates of participations or COPs to general obligation or GO bonds, grants, user fees, or reprioritization. Part of tonight's discussion is about aligning the right tools with the right projects at the right time. And again, uh, revisiting why these three projects that we're first going to talk about, these projects were identified because they are large generational investments. They take multiple years and cycles to deliver, and debt financing may reduce the overall project cost over time by accelerating construction and spreading repayment over generations. And they also trace back to the original intent that was identified in the ballot measure in twenty twenty-one. So at the retreat in March, City Council green-lighted moving forward with COPs for a new facility at the service center to replace, um, buildings two and three as they're well past their useful life. So the next phase of the service center is underway and we're procuring a basis of design now. Uh, so that will define how the facility supports modern operations. It'll clearly define what the building needs to do, how big it should be, and what must be included before the detailed drawings are created. This will help prevent rework, set costs, and space expectations early, ensure alignment, and manage overall costs more effectively. So current costs are, oh, sorry, uh, current costs, sorry. Current costs are estimated between thirty and thirty-five million, which roughly translates to about two point one to two point four million in annual debt service impact. Um, and this is a foundational city impact, our city facility that directly impacts operations. And we'll continue to revise those estimates as that basis of design is developed and we get more information.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
This is what I think on residential. You can buy ready plans for a particular home you might see. Is that available in the, in the commercial construction world?
Not necessarily for a facility like this, and because our needs are pretty unique and for what we're trying to, um, to do on this facility and the site, we have so many unique constraints with the, the site itself, um, it's going to take some investigation to understand exactly what our program.
Just thinking really about the, the, the building, the facility itself.
So we will be, um, as part of that basis design, we'll be exploring materiality. What are the best materials to use? And so, um, you know, more cost-effective solutions as opposed to something like block that's going to be more expensive. Um, so something that's more in that, um, yeah.
He's asking, is there like an off-the-shelf design?
Not necessarily.
If you go to Costco and buy yourself a service center.
Construction options, there are faster, but there aren't necessarily off-the-shelf kind of solutions.
We could find a large enough three D printer potentially, yeah.
Um, so Santa Fe and Mineral is one of our busiest intersections and the Quad Road improvements have been designed to ease congestion and improve safety. The bid opening was in August and, um, award concurrence is under review with construction expected to begin this fall. The good news is that based on final cost, uh, we no longer are requiring COP financing for this project. Any additional updates?
No, I, I would just add that it's, you know, we did secure some additional funding from CDOT and we also were able to get some additional funding through the tip process. So all that really kind of came together at the end to really help us out, so.
Mineral's supposed to be closed, Eastbound Minerals closed soon. That's not this, that's.
That's related to the, the development, the Costco development.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This is on council's tentative agenda for October seventh for a, a more complete, uh, presentation overview and also the contract for, for construction.
So Town Hall Art Center has been a cultural anchor in Littleton for decades. Um, their capital plan proposes modernizing the building while preserving its historic charm. The city has committed to supplementing some funding for this Town Hall-led effort and depending on final scope right now, with the information that we have, the range is approximately, approximately three to six million, with twelve months of construction anticipated once funded. Um, I have an updated schedule, so they're currently procuring pre-construction services and full design is expected to be complete by late winter of twenty twenty-six. And then construction is anticipated to occur from June of twenty twenty-seven to June of twenty twenty-eight. But all of that's contingent upon the availability of funding, but that's their proposed schedule at this point.
That there's additional cost that's not the city's cost, but that.
Correct, yeah.
The fact that, uh, a majority cost will be there is, will, will be more of a minor player.
Yeah.
In that project.
So moving into Project Downtown, um, just a brief reminder, uh, the concept plan was adopted by City Council in November of twenty twenty-four. And Main Street improvements were identified as a phase one for future investment in our historic downtown. Main Street is Littleton's most iconic and heavily used corridor, and phase one improvements are downtown's most heavily used corridor. And phase one improvements focus on roadway and sidewalk reconstruction, streetscape upgrades, and multimodal enhancements. So this is both a maintenance project and an opportunity for catalytic reinvestment. So some new developments, Public Works recently completed a downtown infrastructure assessment, and Brent's gonna speak to that in a moment. And, and some assets track closely to citywide averages, but other, there are some clear weaknesses in others. The city has, um, requested to add Littleton Boulevard, uh, Main Street, and Alamo Avenue to the regional roadway system, which would make them competitive for future tip funding. And an economic impact study is currently underway, and we'll be providing some preliminary efforts on that tonight, and Rachel's gonna speak to that a little later in the presentation. Turn it over to Brent.
Sure, so Public Works, um, did recently complete an, uh, assessment, um, comparing the condition assets of Main Street and kind of, uh, citywide assets. So we'll start off with the, with the pavement. So basically, the pavement downtown matches the average, um, pavement condition index for the rest of Littleton. Um, so that condition is indicative of a street needing to be milled and overlaid. So downtown needs to be milled and overlaid. Uh, the next thing is the, the sidewalks and curb and gutter. Um, what I would say is that they are serviceable. If you were downtown this weekend and saw some of the chalk art, I, you could kind of see that the, the sidewalks downtown, in my opinion, are kind of a, um, I would say a patchwork of different concrete pores from over the years, um, but it's serviceable. But I, I still think it's a, a high priority to replace, um, just because downtown is such a high pedestrian use area. And so that, that would be, um, one reason to prioritize it over, you know, just focusing on just the condition. Uh, the next one is the pavement markings and the crosswalks. Those are, um, in poorer condition than the rest of the city, so those definitely need to be upgraded. Uh, traffic signal poles and overhead wires, so generally the traffic signals downtown are in good condition. I will note that they are the only span wire signals that we have in the entire city and they are in, along Main Street. And so it could be beneficial to create a specific, uh, signal style, um, for Main Street. Uh, next, we'll move on to the underground utilities, which is basically the storm sewer. So we did complete a storm master plan that gave us risk of failure for our storm sewer. Uh, what we have downtown is, uh, a range, right? We have, on two ends, we have the very high risk of failure. We have a high risk of failure section, and then we have a moderate risk of failure section. So the east end, there's an eight-inch clay pipe, um, that has a very high risk of failure, and that's mainly due to age and basically it's undersized. Um, also this storm sewer down here is some of the oldest in the entire city. It's definitely installed before nineteen fifty, so, you know, it's, you know, eighty years old at this point. And then on the west end, there's a thirty-s inch, thirty-inch, um, RCP or reinforced concrete pipe that also has a very high risk of failure. So just based on the risk of failure, um, it's recommended that we replace a storm sewer downtown relatively soon. Uh, next is the trees. So we removed approximately seventy diseased trees a few years ago, and so there's only thirty trees remaining. So as a part of their urban forestry master plan, um, we would recommend to replant additional trees to account for the lost canopy. Uh, fiber, the underground fiber is basically comparable to the fiber around the city. It's in relatively good condition. And then lastly, above-ground utilities, which is the electrical, which is not a city asset. But I would say the availability of electrical connections to provide power for our events in downtown is below average overall, and many of them are not functional. So just in short, um, Main Street needs infrastructure investment. The pavement, crosswalks, uh, above-ground and underground utilities and trees all have issues. And for those reasons, I think additional funding, uh, is justified for downtown.
So this photo captures Main Street as it exists today. It highlights some of the things Brent was talking about, um, the, the, the real deferred maintenance issues that we're facing in downtown. The aging sidewalks, paving, worn crosswalk markings, and traffic signals with span wires. Um, the sidewalks are narrow and broken up by various obstacles, and there's, there is limited space for outdoor dining, gathering. The, the loss of the, the honey locust canopy means there's little shade. It makes it less comfortable in the summer. These aren't just cosmetic concerns and some may affect safety, accessibility, and the overall functionality in downtown. Um, but that deferred maintenance has built up over time and addressing it proactively can help manage costs and reduce the likelihood of more significant repairs later. So again, crosswalks and, and paving treatments are worn, and there's little in the way of event infrastructure like power or lighting. Um, but it just, it has a feel of more like a pass-through than a, a destination. So of the proposed and pro- proponents or components of Project Downtown, these are all interconnected. And this diagram is really just showing if we touch one element, say pavement, we inevitably, inevitably affect sidewalks, lighting, utilities, and other features. So coordinated sequencing is critical. By treating this as one comprehensive package, we minimize repeated disruptions to downtown, maximize efficiency, prevent waste, and deliver a, a stronger long-term outcome for the community. So why invest? When we look at, at why invest in, in, or, when we look at why investment in Main Street matters, the first thing we have to recognize is, is cost escalation. So the original, um, engineer's estimate for Project Downtown was around thirty-six and a half million. The city's budgeted twenty-six, twenty-seven and a half million. With escalation, we now anticipate cost will reach around forty million by twenty twenty-seven for the original concept plan and that original engineer's cost estimate. So that just means that every year we wait, we wait, we're losing some buying power, um, especially against that Main Street concept plan. So we'll just deliver, we may deliver less for the same dollars. At the same time, the infrastructure is showing its age. If we defer maintenance cost, uh, or maintenance further, costs are likely to grow as the system ages and deteriorates. Um, we also have the opportunity to potentially leverage outside dollars for future phases of Project Downtown. Um, equally important is readiness. Project Downtown has been years in the making. En- enabling efforts such as the ballot measure three A, the formation of the Littleton Downtown Development Authority and their plan of development, the Denver Water Main Line, uh, replacement project have, have all been precursors to this work. So taking action now demonstrates that the city can deliver and that builds credibility for future phases and other capital projects. And then Rachel, I'll turn it over for you, to you for the last point.
Yes, so really we're looking at, um, this investment to help us remain competitive. We know that many of, uh, jurisdictions across the state are continuing to invest in either their historic downtowns or creating brand-new downtowns. So as those communities, um, kind of introduce that, that new shiny asset, um, into the region, Littleton's, uh, historic downtown that we already have, I, I mean, that, as Adrian said earlier, that's, that's a hallmark characteristic of Littleton, right? Uh, that's the first thing that comes to people's mind when they talk about Littleton. Um, it's not important just for downtown, right? That success feeds out into the rest of the city. Um, the opportunities that we see in places like, uh, Mineral Place are because, in part of that downtown. So, um, it, at, at the core, it's really so that we can contain or maintain our competitive edge as a city from that, a reinvestment standpoint with businesses.
So Main Street has always evolved. Each generation has left its mark, whether through design or investment choices, and we are at the next turning point. Durable, resilient solutions will better prepare us for the decades ahead. By applying best practices in urban forestry, landscape architecture, and civil engineering, we can design a streetscape that is both more resilient and timeless. That means choosing diverse durable species, building stronger infrastructure, and balancing historic character with modern needs. The goal is to create a downtown environment that thrives for decades without repeating the same vulnerabilities. So the charm, character, and sentimentality of Main Street are, are non-negotiable. Our goal is not to change what it is, but to strengthen how it works so it can remain the community's gathering place long into the future. This is everyone's downtown and, and Main Street has carried our, our history for generations and investing now ensures that it continues. Sorry. I believe that's snow.
When I saw these, these.
That's not snow on the first one.
When I saw these photos, I wondered, how long a- ago was the one on the right? Because things looked different.
About fifteen years ago, so, um, yeah, I mean, just vastly different with just a few subtle changes, but the condition of the road, the condition of the, the, the painting and striping, the loss of the tree canopy, um, some of the, you know, you can't see the span wires as, as easily. Um, but, you know, losing the, the honey locust, and, and that was a, that was a design decision that was made while the intention was great of, of planting a, a monoculture of a species downtown to create this, um, i- it had its repercussions, obviously, and, and we felt that at the beginning of, of Project Downtown. Um, but we know we, we can achieve a canopy like that again because of the requirements.
I was gonna say, especially not a concrete canopy like the pods.
Right, yeah. Not proposing that one. But we know that the requirements to support a, a healthy urban tree canopy are, are, are really significant and well-defined now, and we have much more information about how to, to make sure that we don't repeat the, the same, uh, design choices. So I'll turn it over to Rachel again.
Okay, so as we mentioned, um, we have kicked off our economic impact study, um, for, for downtown and surrounding areas. And then the initial piece in that is identifying comparative case studies, um, that look at successful approaches in communities that are similar to Littleton. Specifically, they have infrastructure improvements and streets, streetscape improvements in historic downtown cores. Um, but these, uh, comparisons are important to note, not just with respect to Project Downtown, um, but also in its connectivity to our work in Littleton Boulevard, Geneva Village, um, other surrounding corridors that feed into Main Street and the, the core of downtown. Um, and we know that our greatest impact with these efforts will come through, um, an aligned and collaborative process that we're each other as we go through them. Um, if you wanna go to the next slide, Adrian, I think we're, for sake of brevity tonight, we're going to let you, um. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, Adrian, I think we're, for sake of brevity tonight, we're going to let you, um, do this on your own, um, your own reading and then we can take questions as needed. So if you want to skip through some of the, um, case studies here, we'll go to one of the summary slides on economic analysis. There we go, thank you. Ultimately, when we get through all of those initial examples of the case studies that, that the team has identified, um, it's starting to confirm what we know. Public investment leads to private investment. This amplifies the return on investment potential overall for Littleton, particularly when we're looking at redevelopment opportunities on Littleton Boulevard, in Geneva Village, et cetera. Um, as I mentioned before, even spanning out to other areas of the city and corners of the city, Mineral Place, um, even down to County Line. And that's why it's critical to, um, consider these assets together as, as they're symbiotic with each other. They really rely on each other to keep Littleton competitive. Um, an additional consideration is how the timing of these investments impacts the success relative to market conditions. Bond run packages, other factors that can equally make or break the, the success of these initiatives. We know that our current economic landscape is uncertain at best. Um, signals of a downturn continue to arise. Leaders in the economic development industry, including all the leading organizations in Colorado, are strongly urging communities here to invest in the down cycles, um, to better position ourselves for a faster recovery when the cycle swings back up. So we're bringing that philosophy to our team's, um, programmatic work, but it's equally important for capital investments as well. And as this work continues, the project team will, um, review several build-out scenarios, estimate, um, various direct, indirect and induced economic and fiscal benefits, um, assess qualitative impacts as well and models and development scenarios. So all of this will be included in their final report. And next slide please.
Rachel, are, are you arguing kind of the best measure of ROI is additional public investment? It's not like that's better than increased or, you know, equal increased tax revenues. I mean, it's just kind of what are, what is your key statement around, what is the best way to measure impact?
Sure, um, the answer is it's all of the above, right? So you do want to pin down what those direct impacts were, will be. You also want to see the indirect impacts on the economy. When we're looking at economic development, we're looking at things like job creation, um, housing, quality of life. Um, all of that feeds into, um, that, that long-term goal and span for the economic health of the city. And so it's not just how many additional sales tax dollars are regenerating on Main Street through the reinvestment. It's how much additional activity and excitement that brings from the private industry that they're bringing their dollars in to invest in our community as well.
And are you, I guess, part of that is saying there are opportunities outside of, in downtown or nearby for, for reinvestment and for kind of redevelopment.
Absolutely, it, it typically starts with the core. And, and that's why one of the, the critical pieces that this team will be modeling is the scenario where we don't reinvest. And what, what happens then, right? Um, the, the downtown area historically, and even a lot today, brings the there, there to Littleton. So what happens when you remove the there, there, right? Does, does that, um, activity still come to those surrounding corridors? Maybe, but, but not quite with the same excitement, um, and level that, that we might like to see to sustain the economic health of the city moving forward.
Sales taxes downtown generate, do we know?
Well.
We have some of that information and usually it's in your monthly report that we haven't submitted yet. But, um, it's broken down by area. We haven't worked in downtown. I couldn't tell though exactly, like when it talks about, um, there's central Littleton, southeast Littleton, um, north Boulevard and downtown. Downtown, um, in July, it generated two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I don't know exactly what the geographic areas that they're considering downtown.
It's, what was it, so one point six million a year to date on the total area was thirty-two million, so.
Um, so just a, um, a couple of notes on the methodology for, for this study moving forward. Uh, the analysis is really, uh, to that question about, you know, what is ROI? It's, it's designed to go beyond just the numbers. So we'll see comparative benchmarks, um, from cities like Castle Rock or Reno Art District, um, that help ground the analysis and what's feasible and realistic and real-world live examples that we can feel and touch, so to speak. Um, we'll look at some quick wins along with longer-term strategies that help identify priorities for investment. Um, policy and incentive roadmaps will be paired for each recommendation as well, utilizing layered strategies that we know are critical to success for both implementation of improvements, but also ongoing maintenance as well. We talked a lot about that shine that other communities are continuing to bring. And in that photo that we saw from fifteen years ago, um, it, it doesn't take too long for that shine to disappear for not reinvesting. That's all for me tonight.
That Lancaster Boulevard image looks to me more like Littleton Boulevard than Main Street right there. So I know we're coming up with Littleton Boulevard, it's very, but you know, to piggyback off, just as I said, is, you know, the, I mean, Littleton Boulevard actually provides more sales tax revenue than Main Street, than downtown. So if you're looking for an ROI there.
And really what our, what our focus is moving forward is to make sure that it's not Littleton Boulevard or Main Street or Geneva Village or Santa Fe or, right? Um, or even if we're looking at corridors to the south, the corridor, um, along Alamo, along Rapp, Little's, uh, Little's Creek Trail, the connection with ACC, the light rail station, right? There's so many assets that we have, um, that are ripe for reinvestment and redevelopment. And that private interest, um, will only spike once downtown looks enticing enough, right? Because that's the, the hallmark with, with Littleton. The Lancaster example is, is pretty interesting and not to dive into it too deep, but, um, it was really in decline for decades. Um, and then, uh, you know, an initial kind of kickstart, if you will, of, of private investment generated, um, which you see in the after photo, which, um, was followed by a lot of, a, a heavy amount of private investment. And it, it can showcase kind of, you know, the risk of, of what you're really facing if, if you don't invest. Um, if that were still the current state in Lancaster, you know, those retail businesses, the restaurants, they were moving off the Boulevard and into other areas of the city. The, the reinvestment brought them back to that core again to bring that there, there back to Lancaster. But that also trickles out to the rest of the city as well. So that's one of the examples that you'll see on the case study list.
So we have two schedule options we're showing right now. Um, option one shows an expedited path utilizing COPs to accelerate the, the project. This path would, uh, deliver the project sooner and avoid escalation. Um, this, the trade-off is using dead capacity without voter, uh, validation. Option two is a general obligation bond. Costs are similar but require voter approval. And the soonest this could happen would be in twenty twenty-six. Uh, the benefit is potentially lower interest rates and stronger community validation, but risks include inflationary delays, escalation, uh, and, and uncertainty at the ballot. So we'll be discussing in greater detail the trade-offs, um, at the end of the presentation. So.
I just have a question, if you could, I have a number. The, what was the, uh, dead service impact for, uh, the Quad Road that we had when we talked last few months ago? Just to.
Wasn't that, wasn't that high because we weren't doing the whole.
Was it like three or four hundred thousand? I was just wondering.
It was, it was somewhere in that range, yeah.
Yeah, because we didn't really do the partial of the project.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes, please. Um, so we've walked through the service center, um, the update on the Quad Road, the Town Hall Arts Center and Main Street. Each of these projects is important on its own and each carries its unique readiness factors, costs and community impacts. But looking at them together as well, considering other recent capital needs that you've discussed, um, it becomes clear that Littleton isn't facing, uh, one or two major projects. We're facing a growing portfolio of large-scale generational needs. So if we continue treating each project as a standalone decision, we may encounter competing priorities, fragment in timing and, and missed opportunities. And so this is really where the conversation shifts. And rather than focusing only on one project at a time, we need to start to establish a holistic capital roadmap, um, a guide that balances timing, funding tools and community priorities across the entire system. So Littleton is, is facing a growing list of needs and they're only getting more complex. From deferred maintenance to new civic investments, relying only on pay-as-you-go is widening the gap. The numbers here are a bit staggering. Uh, the question isn't if we invest, but how we prioritize and, and fund it responsibly. So the city has several tools to fund capital needs, grants, COPs, geo-bonds, user fees, strategic partnerships. But each comes with trade-offs and flexibility, transparency and timelines. Uh, with growing backlog of citywide infrastructure needs, no single tool can close the gap, um, when it's just, when it's pretty significant. Um, success will depend on using every available funding lever as part of a balanced portfolio. And among these tools, geo-bonds and, and COPs really provide the most significant opportunity to broadly address capital needs and making it critical that they both remain available. So capital planning is, is not just financial. Uh, it's about aligning with community values and engaging residents helps define what matters most, uh, ensures transparency and builds trust in how we sequence and fund investments. Uh, so we've reached the point where planning project by plot, project is no longer enough. Our needs are too complex, too interconnected and too expensive to solve in isolation. So this roadmap is about creating a clear, transparent framework that helps us prioritize across departments, weigh risk and impacts and choose the right funding tool for the right project at the right time, which is a, a theme that's woven throughout. Um, without an integrated roadmap, we may find ourselves addressing projects in silos, which could limit opportunities for coordination, funding and timing alignment. And with it, we can ensure every decision is part of a cohesive, long-term strategy and not just a one-off fix. Most importantly, a roadmap builds trust and alignment. It shows residents, boards and, and, and city council that we're investing intentionally and that their voices are shaping priorities and that every dollar is being leveraged to its fullest potential. So we're setting Littleton up for long-term resilience, fiscal health and community confidence. So this is, um, just a, a short list of some of our potential leads, spanning transportation, water resources, facilities, cultural investments. The takeaway is scale and variety and sequencing them again requires that discipline and a long-range framework. So this is just illustrative. It's a timeline that illustrates, um, that long-term financing is not just a one-time decision. It's a, a cycle. We move through periods of program planning, followed by implementation and then return to planning for the next wave of needs. By structuring our financing this way, we can ensure that each cycle is a deliberate, aligned with council's policy guidance and, and grounded in that capital roadmap. We want a stagger issue, so the peak deck services from COPs and geo-bonds do not coincide. Um, and it allows us to be proactive, not reactive, sequencing major projects in a way that reduces with risk, um, coordinates construction across systems and balances both near-term maintenance and long-term investment. So the roadmap provides the framework, council's guidance provides the direction and together they ensure we're funding the right projects at the right time with the right tools.
I just want to, I think what I'm, this is, I just want to be clear for people watching that, the, the yellow is the planning and the blue is like the construction. This is not the payments we're paying off of things.
Correct.
I don't want to seem like, oh, well, we're paying that off, we can start another one. That's not what this is.
That's right, exactly.
This marks a shift to Littleton where, you know, we could, I think this council and the next council frankly can really set the philosophy that we need to be continuously looking to what the next one might be, doing that prioritizing, community engagement, because these things take five, seven years. As if you, if you think of the big projects that we've had in the past few years, that's how long they take, you know, um, to build community, you know, support for them, all of that. So I, th- this is kind of the longer term. And I think when we pair this slide with some of the funding and the capacity that we believe we'll have, it's possible that we can make big strides on those facilities, on those, those other big needs. We just need to, um, kind of get, take the next step, dive in and, and believe that we can.
Um, you know, school district has a ten-year, every ten years they issue a bond. And it's, the, you know, the decision is whether do we just refinance and kind of keep the mill levies at the same level or increase the mill levies. And so I think the community is used to that. I think the thing that's actually most important is the school district, before every bond was issued, there was a year of communications that fell, um, on the, on the, um, staff mostly to, to, to communicate to the community why that bond was important. And so I think the community is used to that kind of pattern.
Yeah, so to, to your point, that, that sets up that rhythm of planning and delivery that builds credibility uh, with residents and creates that sustainable path for addressing this long list of, of needs.
I think schools do it, but I don't think cities do it all the time.
Cities.
Yeah, they do it all the time.
Every city does.
A lot of cities do, where they, they have this kind of pattern where it's every five or seven years. And they, there are actually strategies for managing debt where you're always issuing debt. And this is very similar to schools. You're, you're issuing debt, you're paying it down, issuing so that you have kind of a more level debt service. So those, those are all the kinds of strategies I think we need to be.
But Littleton's been outlier by not doing that.
Geo-bonds?
Typically, yeah.
And when's the last time we did anything with this?
Well, that's why we're an outlier.
That's why we're an outlier.
So this is maybe a pattern for, my point is that maybe a pattern for school, school board, it hasn't been a pattern for Littleton. So it's not like, oh, it's year ten, are we going to vote on a bond?
The idea is to start setting the culture to be able to do things like that.
With three A, which we're going to have to stop calling them, by the way.
Yes.
Our capital sales tax, um, you know, gives us the resources to do that. I mean, uh, uh, you know, prior to twenty twenty-one, we'd have a million dollars here, million dollars there. It's not enough to really support that, that debt service for COPs. Um, I don't think we had, which didn't really give us the impetus to do the planning long-term that we're now trying to, to develop. So, um, this would be, that's why this is really of, would be more of a philosophical shift for us.
So to di- dive a little more into the requirements in that programming, uh, planning period, so that the yellow color on the previous screen. Um, the groundwork for a successful bond program is, is laid well before it reaches the ballot. The planning stage is where we build that credibility and trust. The schedule outlines key steps, defining needs, engaging the community, sequencing projects and establishing a sound financial structure. When planning is done well, a bond program becomes more than a funding tool. It transforms into a community-backed investment plan that residents can identify with. And if the process is rushed, there's a chance priorities may not be as clearly defined or opportunities, uh, for alignment could be missed. Uh, taking the time to plan carefully positions us for the best chance of success. Council's guidance at this stage is especially important to ensure the program reflects not only staff priorities, but also the city's broader vision, value and, and long-term strategy. And in short, thoughtful planning lays the foundation for a successful ballot measure and helps preserve the tool as a resource for the city well into the future. Again, we, we have to have all of the, the, the levers available to us to be able to, to address our, our backlog.
I would say the other lesson from the school district is that program development and packaging included a citizen ad hoc committee to do the prioritization.
So, um, just a snapshot of what a, a thirty million dollar geo-bond would look like for, for a Main Street project. This translates to approximately one point four mils or roughly one point eight to two point four million annually in debt service. So, so very similar to the COPs. Um, the city has two potential pathways for covering that debt. We could utilize a new mill levy or we could rely on existing three A. We could utilize a new mill levy or we could rely on existing 3A revenues, which were originally envisioned to support both operations and major debt service. And so again, at the end of the presentation, we're going to return to the trade-offs between COPs and geo bonds.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Just one kind of qualifier. For purposes of this presentation, we didn't want to change too much from the assumptions for March, so we kept some of these timelines the same. I will say with all of those, all of major projects that we have lined up right now, 426 from the Littleton Boulevard suburb area plan to the transportation master plan, the corridor studies, all the different projects, utility rate studies that will be felt by residents, we would look, if council would choose to move down the geo path, want to have a lot more discussion about when this should happen. Just staff purpose for tonight, but 26 feels heavy for the community and a lot of other things going on. But just a comment.
Melissa, I'll turn it over to you now.
So I don't know if council members back in March, one of the things that staff had brought up was how do you split up the 3A or capital sales tax revenues? How, how would you allocate those revenues? And one of the things they talked about was two-thirds for operations, maintenance, project management, staffing and one-third for debt service. So when you think about what revenues currently look like, 12 million, it would be 8 million for operations and maintenance and about 4 million for debt service. And that, that would effectively allow the city to afford maybe about 60 million in debt or $60 million project off of that, just based off the initial 4 million. And these are broad, these are broad estimates, but I just wanted to have something for, for council. And the reason why staff came up with this is because we wanted to make sure that debt service was both affordable and sustainable for the city and allowed it to fulfill some of its capital improvement plans. So going into the next slide, this takes a broader look at for the next 10 years, what does that 3A revenue look like? And as I mentioned, starts at about 12 million for this year and goes up to about 20 million in 2035. And that's with the addition of estimated mineral, the mineral place sales tax. It doesn't really get reflected that well on this slide, but it, you'll see in the next couple of slides, that little bump from when the city starts receiving the full amount, meaning the revenue share with the developer from mineral place, that reimbursement obligation ends and the city starts receiving the full bulk of that additional sales taxes. So it's a fairly sizable amount of money that the city could dedicate to capital improvement projects, whether it's pay-go or staffing needs or for financing those projects.
You know, I feel like we are just finished a two-year period where our revenues as a city did not meet our projections that were going on when I started two years ago. And so I, you know, I feel like we, that's, that can make us happy, but I don't think we should plan on those increases.
I mean, fair enough. And these, I would say that in my experience, these are fairly conservative sales tax numbers because, you know, to your point, there's always going to be economic cycles. And so one year over the other, it might be up and might be down. And yes, with a lot of cities, they are seeing some flattening of sales tax revenues for the past couple of years. And I think it's consumers, they're reacting to tariffs, they're reacting to increased inflation and wages not keeping up with that. But we don't anticipate that being the plan for forever, right?
I'll just add to the. Yes, I just want to add to that, the gray bars here, and Kevin can correct me, just like you'll see in the out years of our forecast are generally based on historic actuals, trend, growth. So when you take a five, 10-year average, that's kind of, you know, that's our, our best guy, you know, guide for the years that we're forecasting.
Robert, I want to echo your point, Robert, too, that like we are in a flat sales tax environment right now and could theoretically hit a recessionary period somewhere in the next one, two, five years, right? Which, you know, if you don't have a balancing of a revenue generating debt mechanism like a geo bond, you do fall at risk of eating into your normal operating expenditures.
Go ahead.
What's the delta, the delta between the 12 million and the projected in the future? Where, where do you see that going? Does that increase the amount we have for maintenance or are you assuming new debt?
Next slide.
Well, is that one-third, two-thirds?
Right, yeah.
Because the colored lines are the maintenance.
Everybody's answering, what's the answer?
Talk with this slide.
So to answer your question, I guess more fully, this is a longer picture and this, this assumes 30-year debt. And so we took the, the major projects the city's currently contemplating. Conservative numbers on what debt service might look like, conservative numbers on what the 3A revenues might look like. And as I mentioned, you can see that little bump perhaps in 2032 when the city starts receiving the full bulk of the mineral place. And I will add with mineral place EPS, the consultants hired to do that analysis, they assume 2% year-over-year, which is very conservative even by historical standards. So, you know, hopefully, who knows, maybe Costco will knock it out of the ballpark and you guys will get a nice bucket of money to play with. But anyway, the point.
Reinvest into the city.
To reinvest in the city, exactly.
Not for my slush money?
No.
Still not clear on the answer to my question.
So she's saying that the pink, everything under the pink line is the growth of our debt service.
So we grow.
The debt service.
So your debt service, your debt service is actually flat. And so it would be the, the blue and green lines at the bottom. And then under the pink line, if you assume that one-third, two-thirds allocation, one-third to debt service, two-thirds to operations, maintenance, that would be your additional capacity. So it really starts increasing in 2032 and then substantially increases in 2056.
So we could issue new debt.
You could issue more debt relative to that.
Or we could allocate it more towards maintenance.
You could.
You could.
Yeah, so I think with a geo bond, that would probably be accompanied, that's most often accompanied by a mill levy. So that's not as much a part of this picture. This would be the revenue beneath that red line. It just shows that we would have more revenue to support future COPs as our economy and our city revenues grow over time.
Or future maintenance.
Or future maintenance or future geo bonds based on the excess, you know, sales tax capital fund.
Right, I mean typically geo bonds are property tax-based, but, but you could, you could issue, for example, sales tax revenue bonds based off of this. And this, this just provides a mechanism for the city to, to finance. I think one of the prior slides was 460 million of capital improvement projects. Between issuing COPs and GOs, the city needs to find some other mechanism and sales tax revenues or grants would be, you know, a likely candidate.
But in your perspective, geo bonds are always require a new tax stream.
Dedicated revenue stream.
They do typically because, well, I mean, so if you had, I'll, I'll put things in concrete examples, right? So Denver, which is where I live, is coming out to voters in 2025 to ask for geo authorization for a billion dollars worth of projects. They do. They don't need to ask for an increase in the mill levy because previous elections, they had a, a mill levy put in place that allows them to repay debt. So all they have to do is ask for the debt authorization. In this case, the city would probably have to go and ask for two questions in an election. One would be the, to increase property taxes and then the other would be for the debt authorization to do that. You could issue sales tax revenue bonds and you wouldn't have to ask for a revenue increase if you were to just.
Assuming it wasn't a sales tax increase.
Agreed, yeah, yeah.
So this just shows half of our capacity for the future as we look at big projects that we've been, been talking about that are needed going to happen five years, 10 years, 15 years from now.
Right. And it also shows that, you know, for these projects, the city is currently contemplating, they're very affordable. The debt services, relative to the allocated revenue stream, this is, it's fairly sustainable and allows this additional capacity for other reinvestments into the city. So we took a look at COP capacity and what you see here, this is just looking at the essential service buildings that the city has and then how it could potentially leverage that for a COP. With any COP transaction, you will have to pledge some sort of collateral and investors would want to see some sort of essential service, whether that's a lift station or city hall or something along those lines. They would not be so interested in things like the World War II memorial. And the reason for that is because they, they, if it's an essential service, it provides a greater incentive for the city to appropriate for debt service, a stronger likelihood that they'll get repaid. So anyway, long story short, the current capacity is about 78 million and that's just the amount of debt that it could support. And then if the city were to also build Bellevue Service Center, then that debt bonding capacity would increase to about 97 million. And these are based off of insured values. I think one of the previous questions I had gotten was, could you do insured or an appraisal? You could do either, investors will accept either, except most cities don't generally want to go through the time and expense of getting an appraisal. So, but it's that either, either one works. And just for the discussion purposes, like I said, it's currently about 78 million. And then if you build Bellevue, netting out the current service center, that insured value, it would be about 97 million. So that gets you a little bit further to funding the capital improvement projects the city has laid out.
So to paraphrase, because we'd be worth more, lenders would give us more.
Correct.
But there feels like there's two different limits to how much we can get through COPs. One is our capacity of what the lenders will give us and the other is, you know, spending no more than a third of our sales tax on that. And so I think, so how, how much will a third of our sales tax buy?
Well, currently, currently, all the projects that we've laid out in this, what is that? 60, 70 million, something like that? Yeah, it's about 60 something million.
Essentially, if we spend a third of our current sales tax, we kind of, assuming that's our fiscal responsibility rule, we're spending all of our COP, our current COP kind of sales tax availability, right? Not, not our capacity, but our, you know.
Up until a few years from now.
Right. But, but everything, everything else, any other growth has got to be dependent on, you know, improve, improving economy. We're kind of maxing our current credit card, not based on capacity, but based on revenues.
And based on your policy.
It would be your policy.
Sure, but I, yeah, but I think that policy is fairly sound. I'm not, I'm not, okay, sorry, keep going.
So I think, I think it really is a question for council of what, what exactly you want to see happen here and looking at the various different options. And, and, you know, Adrian, I think said it pretty well, where this is, this is just one piece of the puzzle. If you've got 460 million of capital needs, COPs are only going to get you a portion of that, same with sales tax revenues, same with GOs. The, the thing to keep in mind about GOs, especially with regards to the city, your current charter limits GOs to 3% of your assessed value, which is roughly 39 million. So if you were to go down that route, then you would be maxing out for a couple of projects, you'd be maxing out your geo capacity until if and when voters approve a change to your charter, then, then you could issue more GOs.
And that charter change is in consideration by our charter, charter review commission right now.
Funding trade-offs. Both COPs and geo bonds have their trade-offs as we've mentioned tonight. COPs allow speed but reduce future flexibility. Geo bonds validate community support but carry a risk of delay. Tonight, we're asking for policy direction on how council views these straight, these trade-offs. Why COPs potentially make sense for Main Street now? As we've taught, you can keep it there. We might be here for a little bit.
All right, sorry.
Thank you. Main Street's infrastructure is beginning to show signs.
Kevin's been up for about 48 hours working on the budget, so.
A little jittery. For a little slap happy. Main Street's infrastructure is beginning to show signs of deferred, deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. Delays tend to drive costs higher over time. COPs provide a way to act sooner, take advantage of current pricing and help prevent further deterioration. We have higher, more buying power against the concept plan that we adopted last November. COPs are secured by city assets rather than new taxes. Using COPs for Main Street would preserve the option of a future general obligation bond for a broader citywide package of needs. And, and moving forward on Main Street could demonstrate momentum and commitment, reinforcing public and private confidence in the city's reinvestment efforts and supporting future funding initiatives. So building toward a comprehensive bond package, a 2026, as, as the city manager spoke to, a 2026 bond measure could be too early. This funding tool is vital for addressing our growing backlog of capital needs, so we want to be thoughtful about when and how it is pursued. A strong bond effort is built on a tested capital plan, meaning community engagement and alignment with voter priorities. When our back large, back, back large, backlog is largely identified, the foundation for public trust and long-term financial strategy is still developed. Preparing for a bond campaign requires a significant investment of resources and, and moving forward too quickly may limit the effectiveness of that investment. So whereas waiting allows us to better align bond dollars with grants, regional funding and partnerships as well. So attempting a geo bond before we are fully ready could just make future efforts more challenging and, and may reduce our flexibility. And, and again, as, as we've identified several times, we know we have a significant need and so we want to just make sure we have that access to that, that funding lever. So, so why waiting is critical to success and looking at a, a bond package in outer years? It allows us to develop a more comprehensive and balanced, balanced list of needs across all of our, our various program areas. A longer timeline creates space for structured engagement and polling, helping ensure the package reflects community values and priorities. And with additional time, we can better coordinate with external funding sources, maximizing the bond's impacts while reducing reliance on, on mill levy alone. So bonds are the, one of the city's most effective tools to addressing aging facilities, transportation networks and deferred maintenance. And by approaching a future bond strategically and broadly, we can help preserve this tool as a reliable funding option. All right, so policy direction. So the three guiding principles, again, were flexibility, sound investment and preservation. These values help us evaluate not only today's decisions, but also how we sustain the city's capacity for the next generation. So specifically, we are asking, does council support supplementing the town hall art center improvements? How do you see Main Street as an accelerated investment or part of a broader, a broader bond package? And, and should staff begin positioning other projects for a potential bond package in the coming years? And with that, I'll pause for discussion and direction and we welcome your guidance on both the near-term priorities and the broader roadmap.
So let's just go one question at a time. I think we kind of had the first question answered back in, in March, but Town Hall Art Center, everyone still okay?
I would like, yes, I'm okay with the Town Hall Art Center, but I'd like to have a little bit of a conversation about, with the city manager about kind of what he thinks is our long-term debt strategy.
I think that's the third question.
Well, that, that feels like the wrong order because if you're asking, it feels silly to me to go to the answer, the last question being, what is your strategy by first answering two tactical decisions around what is your, what are your, are you willing to issue these bonds? That feels bad.
How about we answer the first question, then we'll move to the third question for you before we get to the second question. Does that work?
I'll say the reason we structure the questions this way is because these projects are the ones, the Service Center, which we have direction on, Town Hall Art Center and Main Street are really those that are most ready to go. And those are, those are the ones that.
It's my own part of this.
That's why we, we are seeking direction and I can speak to, to debt strategy for those. But the third question is more long, long term.
So, so, I mean, I agree with your, your comment there because the comment that you made was about, this is one piece in the puzzle here.
Yeah.
Our residents are, want us to build a puzzle and it's hard to build a puzzle when you only have one piece and you want to know how they all fit together. And you want to know how they all fit together by seeing what is our strategy for debt in the future for some of the other projects, like, you know, with the.
Kettering Park.
Kettering Park, Littleton Boulevard, Sub area plan, the remaining parts of Project Downtown. So I think it's, I agree, it's a little difficult to say, yeah, go on this. If we say, well, if we go on that right now, it puts off something else ten years that you may rather want to put it.
Yeah, I mean, it just feels frustrating to me that we're, we're being asked to answer tactical questions before we understand what is the recommended strategy. Because I feel like, based on this conversation, we need to do a packet, you know, a packet, you know, we have a huge amount of projects that need to be put in place that are going to require both GO and COP funding. And we're making decision, kind of one-off decisions on Town Hall Art Center and Bellevue Center without understanding what that, you know, even having kind of a vision of what that package looks like. And that, and we've been talking about it for, I feel like we've been talking about the vision for this for at least six months and it's just, you know, so, you know. Yeah, it just feels like we're, we're putting the cart before the horse on this.
I thought you did a good job of explaining the vision. What, what question do you have? I mean, besides those, those four projects, what, what more do you need on the vision?
What is the, what is, what, if it's true that we need both COP funding and GO funding to meet our debt or capital needs over the next just ten years, what's the vision for the breakdown between those two? How do we decide which projects fit in GO funding? Right now, we're essentially, I feel like we're making decisions based on COPs, based on this is what's in front of us versus this what's makes sense strategically for our overall ten-year.
I think we're based on shovel-ready or.
Right, that's exactly, I'm saying exactly the same thing. It's based on what's in front of us versus what's best for a debt strategy over ten years to address our overall needs.
I think that strategy has gotten to us where the Service Center has fallen apart because we just, oh, we aren't looking ten years into the future, it's just what's in front of us right now. And so I think that was some of the frustration that came out at a retreat back in the spring here of having this kind of strategic approach to the third question there of the bond packages and capital, or certificates of participation here. And so I think, and some of my personal frustration is this is kind of, right, this all should have been, that, your question should have been started, answered right at twenty-twenty-two, when we passed the, the sales tax increase there. How are we going to do this? And I think that didn't really happen in that time. And we've kind of just got into this what's in front of us here at, at one step at a time. And I think also along with, specifically with Project Downtown, the, the communication with the, of the lack or the loss of the connection to the nexus of that, which was Denver Water Project. That's why we started Project Downtown with Denver Water. And I was up talking to people and they're like, oh, when is, when is that Denver Water Project going to happen and what are you going to do to Main Street? And I had to tell them, well, Denver Water is actually done. People don't, aren't aware of that. So I think the city needs to do a better job of explaining that. And I think we dropped the ball on that Denver Water and Project Downtown here and it's going to be kind of on us to get that out there and why we're doing this in that order. So I think, I, I would like to see that. I don't think they're here to answer that tonight on that third one, but I would like to build off of that.
Can I, but can I wing off of that to say that, like, I think this is Adrian's job, like, this is kind of the need for a city of our size and sophistication with four hundred and sixty million dollars of outsized capital planning, you know, on the books, is why we have a senior staff person to do so. Robert, I totally agree with you. Like, you know, what we have in front of us is, is currently not enough to weigh all those priorities equally amongst variables amongst each other, right? And I think it's not just economic, like, revenue potential, it is outsized risk to service provision and economic downside if we wait till something breaks to fix it. And we don't even have a, I mean, look at our fricking elevator in the library. Multiply that by maybe a hundred thousand and you're probably at the scale that you'd need to be. So I agree, Robert, like, we are way, way behind in having this strategy. I will also say, you know, these are the projects we do have in front of us. And I think to the point that was made earlier, we are going to need to use both. And I think lacking further variables in that equation, my thought process is that you, you lean into both simultaneously. Because if you tap out, for example, your COP option in its entirety, you therefore have no capacity for rapid response in case something truly breaks. We have already borrowed against our sewer fund to do basically one project and we have maxed that out.
Yeah, but I feel like we're being asked to, for the, in our current situation, being asked to tap out our COP capacity based on our revenue from one A, understanding we believe it'll grow. But that's, I mean, between those two and the Service Center already, we're being asked to tap that out now.
I think if you did every single project on that board, you tap out your COP capacity in its entirety, which I would advocate against.
For, for a few years.
Yeah, well, I think that's really important though, because we're talking about cycles. We're talking about trying to build this into cycles. So, yeah, we are, we're hitting, you know, maxing out our credit card on COPs now. And then we have to develop that plan to utilize our other funding strategies or funding options, you know, the GO bonds, grants. And then that's the next cycle. And then we come back and now we have more ability to, you know, we have a higher revenue. And that's the next part of the cycle is we can take a look at COPs again for something else because our revenue has grown. I mean, that, that, I believe, I feel like that's the vision that we were shown. Now, maybe it doesn't have as many specifics as, as we would want. I certainly want more specifics in there. But that's, that's how I see that cycle. And we're at the beginning of it now. We have important projects that we've committed to the community that we would engage with. So I, I understand that the, I also share concerns about emergency situations arising and not having capacity to deal with those. Reminding ourselves that the one-third rule is self-imposed. And so if we truly ran into an emergency, we can, we can make adjustments to that. I, I also agree that the one-third rule is a good and sound one.
We couldn't make adjustments down if we already have a third of it as COP. We couldn't add more for an emergency, I think is the point.
But I, I just, I just want to jump, I just want to jump in really quickly. I mean, this is, this is just one fund that the city has, right? Like, this doesn't even talk about any, any reserves or the general fund or anything else.
The other capital fund. And the fact that that one-third, which I think for, you know, from, from Melissa, I don't know if you've said this tonight, but is, is on the lower side of what, what many cities use for a capital fund. We have flexibility to respond to other emergencies or needs within the rest of not only three A, but the other, you know, capital fund that we have, that we had, you know, prior to, to three A. So Councilmember Mayor, Mayor Protam, I'm not, you know, arguing that we, we would have, have reduced flexibility, but we would still have some flexibility. We've imposed some discipline on ourselves with this one-third rule and it would enable us to move forward on these, these projects that, you know, in our view, we've talked, we've talked about this six ways to Sunday, are things that do need to happen. These are deferred maintenance that are, are growing more expensive. You know, we haven't talked, just a comment about Town Hall Art Center. And the first one, that's one where the Town Hall Art Center organization is rapidly narrowing in on their, you know, they're doing their pre-construction services. We're going to have those conversations to solidify costs. They're going to be on a design and construction timeline very soon that we are a minor player in. I think subjecting that, in that case, to a GO bond would not, would cause a lot of disruption to their, to their plan. That's why that one, we feel, you know, does need to be a COP, you know, backed project because we can, you know, control that, that funding as we partner with, with them. You know, all three of, of these, these projects are important deferred investment projects that I think, you know, need to be done. And they're going to get more costly, they're ready to go or nearly ready now. I think, you know, projects like the library, you know, Kettering Lake, Kettering Park, museum, city center, all, all of those, you know, we are at the onset of the, the program development as Adrian outlined it there. And we are going to, you know, it's going to take, I, I think within a, a couple of years in terms of strategy, we'll have some, we'll be ready, we'll be more solid, we'll have what we need for a, a, you know, GO, you know, engagement, discussion with the community and election that could get us that next tranche of debt that could be, be backed by a property tax, mill, mill levy. You know, we still have, we, voters gave us three A a few, a few years ago. And I know there's a lot of pent-up energy to see us do something significant with those. And I, I think this, this COP for these projects would help us to, to follow through on that revenue that we've just, we're still building up to using.
So we did agree on question one, correct?
I have a question.
As a COP.
On what?
I have a question on question one.
Okay.
What percentage of the capital improvements that Town Hall is going to do will this COP cover?
We don't know yet because we are trying to be, as we had some conversation today on a staff level about kind of what are the basic landlord, property owner responsibilities? In very broad terms, Town Hall Art Center is committed to renovating that building for everything performance center-based. And that's the majority of it. You know, we are going to be, you know, I think it's appropriate that we cover things like mechanical systems and some of the facade work that needs to be done. You know, there are some kind of basic landlord responsibilities that the city as the owner of the, of that, that building will have. As you, as we talked about, they're hiring, they're out for bid now for pre-construction services. That's someone that comes alongside their design team to do some costing of what some of these things might cost as they near completion for, for, for design. That, all of these, the art, art systems and things that we might pay for will be part of that. So it'll just be a discussion, you know, there will be limits on what the city can do here. But we don't have an answer to what our piece will be.
So it's infrastructure. It's going between a half and a quarter of the total project and then they'll put in there, we'll do elevator, HVAC, things like that, and they'll do all the other.
But you, you believe right now the limit is six million dollars from the city?
I think that's a reasonable, based on Town Hall Arts preliminary estimates for the total cost, that follows what the mayor just roughly outlined, that that's probably a quarter to half of what that project could be.
Yeah. Can I say that I am in favor of using a COP mechanism for this project, given all the other things that are in play? However, I will also want to point out too, that it is incredibly risky in the sense that you are now almost entirely dependent on a different organization raising the additional capital. If we are committing debt service to a project for which we have no control, over seventy-five percent of the actual capital being expended, it is entirely possible that fundraising efforts fail, that like they do not raise the amount that they wanted, that they do not get the grants that they were going to get. So that number, while it is there, is very soft.
Well, it's also, we're, it's a building we own, we needed to update the mechanical system and that. So it's not necessarily, they're not necessarily tied together as being.
No, I, I mean, a hundred percent that like we have a responsibility for it and everything. I'm just saying, the number that we are putting out there is literally not based on an engineering design or a prediction of what their actual revenue generation is from raising funds for it.
Engineering design team did, has helped them with some, some preliminary.
Yep. Preliminary. Might be a very dumb question, but to preface it, like, like you.
My team.
But are we able to tie our funding to specific elements in the design or the, in the, the building?
Yes.
So like, we, we would, we're not going to help with, you know, whatever sort of theater.
Stage, theater stuff, yes. We, we will have a contract with them. This will be part of probably a lease addendum where we also have a lease from the nineties that we need to update. So we're, we're, we're working on, on both of these, these pieces. And so, yes, we'll have a contract for, for specifically what we are, are supporting.
Thank you. So circle back, are we good on the Town Hall question number one?
Yes.
To jump to question number.
As part of, of COP?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what, yeah, that was, yeah.
Yes.
To jump to question number three, because I also hope this is going to be a quick answer, is I think we're hearing that we would like to have a more robust strategic planning for our potential debts, options in the future with the project, kind of not specifically the projects, but layout, all those things, City Hall, Museum, the Kettering Gallup, Master Plan, Littleton Boulevard, things like that. We're all good on that? We want to have.
Do you have a quick question on that? When are we going to retire the proposed debt? What year would that happen?
Thirty years after.
It depends. Most, most bonds are twenty or thirty years.
Okay. All those, all those charts were thirty years.
Yeah, we showed thirty years here for illustrative purposes, but if you want to do twenty, do twenty.
Okay. So four, now for Main Street. So they have basically the accelerated versus parter branch is COP or GO, right? That's kind of what you're getting at there in our euphemistic manner. Well, it's marketing. It's marketing. Yeah, we heard about that. Yeah.
Yeah, it's tying the two together.
So thoughts on that? Patrick?
Yeah, I'm still in favor, just as I did back in March. COP is, I think, the way to go. I don't want to wait another year, potentially two years to put this on the ballot for GO. I'm ready to go. Inflation's killing us. Let's, let's start delivering what the citizens wants to deliver.
Joel?
I'm in favor of a COP for Main Street. I, just to elaborate on that slightly, it's not, it does not actually, looking at slide on, slide thirty-nine, it does not even actually eat up all of our COP capacity. It's a lot of it, but it doesn't cap us out. So I think we need to make good on that.
You think both are trying to, me go next?
Oh, I mean, sorry.
For me, what's changed, I was against using COP and I still don't think it's strategically the right choice. Following Bud's recommendation, you should do flashy projects through GO bonds and the dull projects through COPs. And Service Center is dull and Downtown is flashy. But I was leaning towards GO bonds when I felt like we could do that within a year. And I feel like that is my understanding of how quickly we can do that has changed. And so I am changing my position and I'm ready to support COPs.
I'll support COPs, even though I didn't earlier at the retreat because of all sorts of perceived needs that we had on our list of capital improvements. But at some point, I think we need to focus and move forward with these projects. And I don't think GO bonds are the right thing to do right now.
I think that's just, I'm in favor of the GO bonds. I think leveraging all of our capacity onto a sales tax, sales tax revenue in an uncertain future and not diversifying by bringing in new revenue via mill levies in a GO bond is really risky. And a year is not too long to make a compelling case to put this on a ballot. It's, you can start this off slow. Do one project. To Robert's point, it's flashy, it's got a, it has a actual nucleus of people that are willing to. It's got a, it has a actual nucleus of people that are willing to advocate for it already, of which none of our others, none of our other facilities projects will have that. Like, why, I think we're just, anyway, yep, I said, I said what I was going to say.
I said what I said.
Well, I just want to say, this is, I really enjoyed the presentation. It was well laid out and clearly articulated. I kind of, this is what I was hoping to have back in February, March, April, March. I keep saying different months, but you know. Months ago. And, you know, I know I was more in the GO camp then. I wasn't because I necessarily, I mean, I still think it's, this is a great project for GO bond, but I was more held up on, it felt like we were kind of not getting going fast enough and it kind of just pushed things on the road and just made this assumption it was too quick and didn't kind of do our due diligence. I think this is more due diligence and I hope number three there, we're going to have, get ahead of the game with due diligence for things like with the Kettering Gallup Master Plan. We say, hey, we got this beautiful plan, we have no idea how to pay for it. It's going to sit as a plan for four or five years before we have to, and then we have to do another plan again. And so it'd be, it'd be nice if we lay out this timeline, hey, we can do this, we can come up with another plan here. And I, I don't think that we were doing that well as an organization for the last three years here with that. And so I think with the, the, looking at the numbers and look at the time, I'm, I'm okay, comfortable with going with the COP and accelerating it here, even though I do think it's probably better suited for a GO bond, but I don't think it's a bad thing to put forward to accelerate here. Because when we passed the 3A sales tax, it was, you know, that debt service was part of that. How are we going to pay for some of these things? I feel comfortable with where we laid out with that. And then I know Councilmember Peters emailed her thoughts as I was just looking at our protocols. It's improper for us to talk on behalf of a council member that's not here. So I know the city manager has her, her thoughts emailed there, so.
Do those protocols allow me to share?
It just says council members.
Council members, all right, well. Peters did share kind of a rationale. She, her email communication to us said that she had reviewed the packet and, you know, was wanted to respond to these, these questions. And she is supportive of all of those questions, so.
The number two is more.
Right, it is more. But I think the way we've, we've framed it tonight, she's in favor of COPs for both projects and then also the long-term planning that we need to do.
There was a clear recommendation in number two from staff. Councilmembers, Inc.
Just on the third point here, I, as we're, I believe we are giving direction to staff, I, I might have misunderstood, but I heard things about like, well, in a couple of years, we'll be well-positioned or something like that. I think that in the past, based on my understanding of what's happened is that, I, I think that Cannes been kicked down the road a few too many times on planning on how we're going to issue debt. And I think that this needs to happen, like, we, we need to actually make it happen. And that needs to be like clear plans about which specific projects we're, the staff, staff is recommending for GO bonds or COPs or other specific funding options. Also, I think that it's important that, and thank you, Councilman Reckart, that we take into account when this LPS is going to generally be asking the voters for a bond. And we need to try to not do our, our GO bonds on the same years and/or big other ballot issues like a charter amendment to increase our capacity to issue GO bonds. We, we really probably shouldn't be trying to battle on per ballot space on those issues. And so that should, I would think, be a part of our, our long-term planning is trying to coordinate those things to the extent we can.
Good job, staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
My soapbox. So do you feel like you have the direction you desire?
Yep.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any update reports, city manager? City attorney?
Can you read us your long email? Sent you a, legal updates. I did file with the Arapahoe District Court petition to get legal review of the charter amendment that is going on the November election. Can't really give you an update necessarily on when they will actually rule on it. But essentially, the petition is asking the court for clarification regarding whether or not it's essentially a violation of the anti-growth statutes that the state of Colorado has adopted. So as part of that process, the petitioners will have an opportunity to intervene. That would be that they have an ability to file on their own behalf if they want to make an argument for or against or the status of that. So stay tuned. That is all I have, thank you.
Just let everyone know, the 43rd season of Town Hall Arts Center is starting this weekend. I'm going, and then, uh, see you everyone Saturday.
No, tomorrow. I'm greedy.
Oh, yes, well, see you tomorrow and Saturday. All right, we're adjourned.